Good morning, councillors, good morning to staff and to this council meeting. Now, a very important announcement, there has not been any aerial fly past scheduled for today, so if we do hear anything, it won't be anything to do with us. I'd like to welcome members of the public to this meeting of the council, particularly those watching the live stream on the council's YouTube channel. The council supports the principle of transparency and encourages filming, recording and taking photographs at its meetings that are open to the public. Members are advised that this meeting may therefore be filmed, recorded and photographed. At this point, I would make the point that any gentleman who wishes to take off his jacket may comfortably do so, and of course, ladies, you may remove your gloves and hats. I'm going to take mine off anyway, so. Okay, that feels better. We're meeting at the leisure centre at Littleport. This is in order to follow the guidelines we have received from the public health to manage an indoor meeting of this size during a Covid pandemic. Members are asked to remain in their seats for the entire meeting, except when speaking, when they are asked to stand. In order to register to speak, you will need to raise your hand. You will then be automatically added to the list of speakers by my right-hand man here, and if you have a point of order, you'll need to raise your hand and shout 'chair'. This means that there will be an alleged breach of the council's rules or procedures or law. I will need that member to indicate the rules or law which he/she considers to have been broken, or personal explanation. This may only relate to some material parts of an earlier speech by that member, which may appear to have been misunderstood in the present debate. Please can I ask all members to turn their mobile phones to silent or vibrate during the meeting whilst the meeting is taking place? Thank you very much. We go on to apologies. I believe we have two apologies, one from councillor Peter McDonald and one from councillor Mandy Smith. Is there any other indications of... No, I can see no hands. However, there is somebody walking up here now. There are a couple of empty spaces, so I presume that they've probably got lost in fence somewhere along the line. But welcome, Kevin. Minutes of the 18th of July, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of the council held at the 18th of May 2021. The council is asked to agree that this is a correct record. Do I have a proposal and second?
Councillor Nettinger's proposing, Chair.
And is that a second? Thank you. Okay. Can I ask any member who does not agree with this proposal to raise their hands now? Right, okay. I will now sign the due document as a correct record. Whoops. And pass that over to Michelle. Thank you very much. Now, I have a number of announcements to make today. On behalf of the council, I'm delighted to welcome our new director of public health, Jodi Atrey, who started work on the 14th of June 2021. Now, I'm not quite sure whether she's here today, but I suspect not. She's not going to introduce herself? Right. Unfortunately, due to Covid-19, I was unable to attend the Cambridge American Cemetery on Memorial Day to honour the men and women who died while serving in the US military. However, a wreath was laid at the cemetery on my behalf and the people of Cambridgeshire on 31st of May. The council will wish to note that citizens' ceremonies are still being held without dignitaries due to Covid-19. The wife and myself attended a tree planting ceremony at the Wildlife Garden at Elkenbury Civic Hub on the 18th of June 2021. R.G. Carter has donated six trees to the Wildlife Garden to celebrate its centenary year. The trees were carried out in collaboration with Urban and Civic and the local school Ermine Street Church Academy. I'm convinced that these trees will thrive and prosper as they are well watered in, as was your chairman while he was digging them in. But we go without saying that. To honour and support the men and women who flew of the Armed Forces community, I can report that the council flew the Union Flag and the Armed Forces Flag for the week of 21st to the 27th of June to commemorate all servicemen and women in the Armed Forces. I was very privileged to attend the groundbreaking ceremony at Marley Primary Academy in Cambridge on the 23rd of June, and I look forward to returning next year to see when it was completed. On that occasion, the weather was sunny. I was also honoured to attend the Queen's Award for Enterprise at Grafford Water on the 7th of July to witness Anglia's Water receiving the prestigious Queen's Award. It was a very, very, very good event, that. So that concludes my announcements for today. We then go on to the next part of the agenda, which is declarations of interests. Have any councillor, any declarations of interest in what councils... Yes, would you like to stand and introduce yourself?
Thank you very much, Chair. I've been one of the main campaigners for EU migrants' rights since 2017, and I'm currently working, one of my part-time jobs, for an organisation called The Three Million, which is one of the main non-partisan organisations in the UK campaigning for EU migrants' rights. So therefore, this relates to one of the motions today, item 10 on the agenda, motion C, and I received the dispensation to speak and vote on this motion. Thank you.
Right, thank you for that. You declare an interest. Does that preclude voting? Doesn't preclude a voting? Yeah, okay.
Councillor Bradnam has indicated to speak, Chair.
Yes, sorry, Councillor Bradnam.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I ask all members, I don't have a declaration of interest, but I do have an interest in us all being able to hear each other, and so I just wanted to ask, could all members who speak, speak as if they are speaking in King's College Chapel, that pace? Otherwise, we won't be able to hear what you're saying because of the echo in this room. Thank you.
Sorry, I missed that. Please, clearly and slowly. By the same token, can we do something about the acoustics? Because I found that very difficult to hear.
Okay. In which case, Chairman, perhaps we all need to speak closer to our microphones?
Ah, right, okay.
Maybe not stand up.
Yeah. That's a good, very good point. I'm sitting on a bit of a high chair now anyway, so, yeah.
Actually, Chair, sorry, Chairman, that is a good point. If people don't stand up, then they are closer to their microphones, and we might find it easier to hear.
I think you've got a very good point there. I heard that quite clearly, but I didn't hear it when you were standing up. Yeah. So I do wonder whether we do need to be standing up. We can, yeah.
Chair, can I suggest that we suspend the standing order relating to standing for the duration of this meeting?
I would definitely propose that and second it.
I will second it, Chair.
Oh, right, okay. Are we all agreed on that? Are we? Let's have an agreement. Well done. Thank you very much. Public question time.
Chairman, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I have declarations of interest. I have a declaration of interest with regards to the remuneration panel. One of the remuneration panel members is a friend of mine, although we have not spoke about the remuneration panel, and I don't intend to speak to him about it later either.
Right, public question time. I believe we have two questions, which... Yeah, item four, public question. Which allows members of the public to ask questions to the council meeting, providing they have given advance notice. The council has received notice of two questions, the contents of which have been circulated electronically to all members and published on the council website. Can I ask East Cambridgeshire District Councillor Bill Hunt to come forward and ask his questions? And you have two minutes, Bill.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning. I don't have the option of sitting, so I'll stand. This is a question for a leader of the council, which I'm sure you've all had sight of. Over six months ago, on the 15th of December 2020, full council passed a motion referencing the A1123 and the A1421. The resolution was instruct the executive director for place and economy to pursue the reclassification of the A1123 and the A1421 from A to B. This is the road that goes from Soham to Huntingdon, and it goes through Hadnam and Stretton and Wicken and Eirish and Bluntisham. It was noted that all the Liberal Democrat members abstained and would not support this motion, which had overwhelming support from the parishes of Wicken, Stretton...
Chair, can I just say, this is not the question that was given notice of. Could he ask that question first? He has an opportunity to ask this one afterwards.
Okay. It was noted that all the Liberal Democrats abstained and would not support this motion that had overwhelming support from the parishes of Wicken, Stretton, Wilburton and Hadnam. There is great concern that the Rainbow Alliance administration will kick this proposal down the road with more talk about surveys, pollution studies and more investigation. Will you confirm, please, I'm sorry, I'll delete, please, I put it in there to be polite, will you confirm that you will listen to the residents of the A1123 villages and push ahead with this action without delay? Alternatively, will you procrastinate and ignore the wishes and indeed the needs of these communities who are in danger? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. In the absence of councillor McDonald, who is self-isolating, could I ask the leader of council, councillor Nettinger, to respond, please?
Thank you, councillor Hunt. I was going to apologise for sitting while you're standing, but maybe I won't. I'm going to answer the question that you put in for the public question, which was not the question that you've just asked, and then we'll come back to the question that you've just asked for your supplementary. As indicated in our joint agreement, the new joint administration is committed to reducing the impact of traffic on our towns and villages and cities.
Could you speak a little bit closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
As indicated in our joint agreement, the new joint administration is committed to reducing the impact of traffic on our towns, villages and cities. Speeding, heavy goods vehicles and congestion all cause major problems for those living near to major roads in our towns, cities and villages. Tackling the impact of traffic can take many forms, and as a joint administration, we are determined to look at a wide range of options for improving the quality of life and tackling the impact of traffic on those living near to major roads. In some areas, this may be best done by tackling speeding or rat running. In others, it may be best done by giving higher priority to pedestrians or cyclists and other road users. We will be looking at all the options with a real openness to listening to local views on what would be the most effective measures to tackle traffic in our towns, cities and villages. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nettinger. Councillor Hunt, do you have any supplementary?
Yes, I do have a supplementary, and thank you, councillor Nettinger. I note what you have said, and my supplementary question falls into three parts. A, do you support the reclassification of the A1123 and A1421 from A road status to B? That's one section. B, will you honour the county council, the full council it was, motion of December 2020, which was supported by East Cambs District Council, a full council motion, the parishes of Wicken, Stretton, Wilburton and Hadnam? So that's will you honour the county council's motion? And C, when will you be able to comply with the clear wishes of the residents? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. Would you like to respond to that, councillor Nettinger?
Thank you, Chair. On the reclassification of that road, my support will not be what determines that decision. That decision will be made by the Highways Committee once they have received the report, which has, there has been a significant amount of work done to investigate whether that reclassification would be in the best interests of the people of Cambridgeshire. I have to say that I have some concerns due to the significant loss of money that there would be if that road were reclassified, and it is not clear to me that reclassifying that road would provide the benefits that residents in that area wish for, and it would also lead to an ongoing loss of income for this council. But the decision will not be made by me, it will be made by the Highways Committee when they are fully informed of the results of the investigation into that piece of work. On how we would tackle the issues of traffic in those villages, there are numerous ways of tackling traffic in those villages, some of which may be considerably more effective than changing the name or the number of the road. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nettinger.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Hunt, for your question. Now, can I ask councillor Goodgliff of the Chair of Children's and, oh no, 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 sorry, Fennan County Councillor Andrew Lynn to come forward and ask his question, please? Thank you, councillor Lynn.
Thank you.
And you have two minutes.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for letting me come this morning. My name is Andrew Lynn. I am the mayor of Wisbeach, Wisbeach Town Council and Fennan District Councillor for the Clerks and Ward in Wisbeach, as well as a foster carer for almost nine years. At the most recent meeting of the Children and Young People Committee, Cambridgeshire County Council's Vice-Chairman of the Corporate Parenting Committee on more than one occasion described foster carers as amateur. Foster carers provide a vital and valuable role for children in Wisbeach and across the county, and they are greatly valued for their contribution to children's welfare throughout the country. Foster carers undergo intensive and consistent training. I am personally trained up to a diploma level three in caring for young children and young people. I am fully first aid trained and also have completed over 50 different training courses. Will the leader of the council demonstrate that the Cambridgeshire County Council has not lost faith in its foster carers by firstly unequivocally reputing the comments that foster carers are amateur, and secondly by reiterating the previous council policy, not merely supporting existing foster carers, but appealing for additional potential foster carers to come forward in the county?
Thank you for that question. Now, I will ask councillor Goodgliff, the Chair of Children and Young People's Committee, to respond to that. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. Thank you for raising this question, as it provides me with the opportunity to place on record my most sincere admiration for the professionalism of our Cambridgeshire foster carers, including, of course, yourself and your family. I would like to record my thanks for the incredible contribution all foster carers make to the lives of our children and young people in our care. I think it is important to provide some context in respect of the comment made by councillor Slatter at the Children and Young People's Committee. She was seeking to distinguish between very small children's residential homes that might provide care for two or three children at any one time, with the care provided by foster carers, who might also look after a similar number of children and children and young people. Councillor Slatter made the comment about amateur foster carers in contrast with the employees of the children's homes. She was interested in exploring the differences in the profile of children and young people who may be placed in one form of care as opposed to another. Councillor Slatter immediately apologised for any offence she had unintentionally caused by this unfortunate choice of words. I'm sure that all members of the council will join me in thanking our foster carers for the love and care they provide to some of our most vulnerable children and young people. The leader and deputy leader have asked me to specifically confirm that supporting our existing foster carers and doing all we can to recruit new foster carers to come forward are among the highest forward are among the highest priorities for children's services in this joint administration. Councillor Slatter shares these priorities. She recognises and understands the professionalism, level of training, you mentioned this morning, and experience that all foster carers bring to the Cambridgeshire County Council, and most importantly, to the children and young people in their care. She remains upset that her unfortunate use of a word has caused offence. To conclude, I'm very pleased to have this opportunity to place on record our gratitude to all of our Cambridgeshire foster carers for their dedication and the life-changing difference that they make to children in our care. We will ensure that our foster carers continue to receive all the support that is needed, do all we can to support the continued recruitment of new foster carers to our fostering family.
Thank you for that. Councillor Lynn, do you have any supplementary?
I do, yes. I'm a little bit disappointed that it seems that you have just sat there and just gave me a lot of excuses for one of your councillors and at least the vice chairman of the committee calling foster carers amateur on any level cannot be considered as acceptable at all. And in light of that, I want to ask if the leader intends to replace the vice chairman of the county council's corporate parenting committee with someone who is not so fundamentally prejudiced against foster carers and the role that they fulfil in helping children to get the best possible start in life.
Chairman, I've had advice that councillor Lynn may wish to recall the comments he's made, as they are personal.
They may sound personal, but I don't see them any more personal than being called amateur by a professional in this, and much less defamatory. What is, what do you consider defamatory? Do you not consider foster carers being called amateurs defamatory? As you can see, this, I'm not here for pleasure, I'm quite upset about this. I know lots of foster carers that have dealt with children that are so damaged that it would make your toenails curl, and if you was ever unfortunate enough to have to see and deal with some of these children and get them through life so that they can survive as adults, then you would understand exactly how I feel and why I feel this question is very relevant.
Thank you for that, councillor Lynn. Yes, I'm sure you will appreciate your great, great concern at the unfortunate wording which was used.
If I may, all I can do is reiterate my apologies. I understand your position. Foster carers are absolutely professional, and in my working life, I have worked with many families like yours and many children, and I do understand the difficulty of the job and the absolute commitment that foster carers, like yourself, dedicate to it, and I'd like to thank you for all of your work and say we do honour and thank all of our professional foster carers.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you, councillor Lynn. Next on the agenda is five petitions. This allows members of the public to present petitions in accordance with the agreed protocols. No petitions were received, so we move on to the next item, which is items for determination from Policy and Resources Committee. Can I ask the chairman of the Policy and Resources Committee to present the said report?
Thank you, Chair. This report was discussed at the Strategy and Resources Committee. I don't think there's any need for further debate here, so I would just like to propose to move the acceptance of the report and move on. Thank you.
Is that seconded, presumably?
I hope it's seconded, Elisa. Elisa?
Yes.
Right. Is anybody who wants to speak with that? Councillor Count?
Yes, thank you, Chair, for allowing me to debate this, as is correct for council motion. I don't think it's appropriate that councillor Netzinger actually gets to suggest that there will be no debate on this. It's up to us to decide whether there'll be any debate on this. So if I may, ask the administration, two of the most important factors we cannot control are inflation and interest rates. I'd like to ask, is the administration satisfied with the predictions being used for both? I must admit, I have some concerns about the volatility, so I'd like to know if the administration shares my concerns about the volatility, not the accuracy, and the potential volatility, what's, if they agree that it's likely to be some variance to the predictions, what specific measures it plans to take to guard against that risks? I have a second question. I have significant concerns that the Liberal Democrat administration will be unable to balance its revenue budget even without its plans for extra expenditure. I also have significant concerns that they will resort to borrowing with insufficient consideration for the future revenue implications in order to fund some of the pet vanity projects. Can the administration advise me whether the headroom indicated is sufficient for their anticipated needs, or more appropriately, are they willing to instigate a review to revise the headroom downwards to avoid that temptation? Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor Count. Does anybody else wish to speak? Right, councillor Netzinger, do you want to reply to that?
Just to sum up on this debate, so presumably this will be the final speech, I would like to respond to say that we are very well aware of the volatility that there is at present in both inflation and potential interest rates. That is something that we will need to keep a very close eye on as the year moves ahead. The Treasury Management Report will, the Treasury Management will respond to that volatility, and it was discussed at the Strategy and Resources meeting where councillor Count was unfortunately not present. In terms of the ability to balance the revenue budget, this is also something that the new joint administration is extremely aware that we have a major challenge in doing. We were very aware that this was going to be a challenge when the budget was set last year, and the administration chose not, again, not to take the maximum council tax on offer. We were also, we have, are also extremely well aware that this year the budget was balanced on the basis of £22 million of unfunded borrowing. These are challenges that the new administration has been left as a legacy by the previous administration, and it is going to be quite tough to deal with those challenges. That is something that we will be working hard on over the summer to try and make sure that we are able to bring forward our priorities as an administration, as well as setting a balanced and prudent budget for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I propose to put this to a vote, as there was dissention in the camp. So all those in favour of the report, please raise their hands. Well, okay then. Anybody against? Any abstentions? Ah, one abstention. Right, thank you. Okay, that's carried. The second item at 6B is the Cambridgeshire and Peterborough Mineral Waste Local Plan Document. Can I ask the Chair of Environment and Green Investment Committee, councillor Dupree, to move that recommendation as set out on the agenda, be adopted and ask that the vice chair, councillor Gay, to second it?
Seconded.
Do you wish me to speak now, Chair?
Do you wish to speak to it?
I think so, just briefly to propose it, thank you. I propose that this council adopt the Cambridgeshire and Peterborough Minerals and Waste Local Plan, incorporating the modifications recommended by the inspector and other minor editorial modifications. I also propose the consequent revocation and updating of various documents as laid out in C, D and E of the recommendations, and the arrangements in F regarding the adoption of the plan by Peterborough City Council. This review began in 2017 and has gone through its stages of public consultation and examination by an inspector. With this new minerals and waste local plan in place, this council will have a robust and up-to-date policy-
Councillor Gay to second, chairman. Councillor Gay to second.
Am I seconded?
Right. Is anybody who wants to speak for or against this before I put it to the vote? Oops, all those in favour, please show. Whoops, anybody against? Any abstentions? Nope, carried. Thank you very much. We now come on to item seven, members allowances. Can I remind members that in order to avoid the need for each of you to individually declare an interest in this report, the monitoring officer has issued a dispensation relieving all members from the requirement to disclose interests and the restrictions on participating us, the council?
Chair, we must take a vote on that receipt.
Sorry?
We must take a vote on that receipt.
Oh, yes, yes. Everybody interested? Everybody agree with that, that we are just receiving it? We're not debating it at the moment. Thank you very much, that looks like unanimous. Right. I also propose, as Chair of the council, to move the recommendation as set out in the covering report, and will ask again my vice chair to second that.
Chairman, I am happy to second the recommendations set out in the covering report.
Thank you. I am pleased to remove the recommendation as set out in the covering report and open it to debate. First of all, is there any amendments? I can see no amendments. Does anybody wish to speak for or against the report? Councillor Netzinger?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to express my thanks to the independent remuneration panel for the work that they've done on this. It's often a thankless task, asking about council allowances and doing all the work that goes into setting out these reports. I am very grateful to the independent panel for the work that they've done on this, and on this occasion, very happy to accept their report, which seems to me eminently sensible. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Anybody else wish to speak or comment? In that case, I will put this to the vote. Oh, must be quick. Councillor Count?
Thank you, Chair. I welcome this report and the hard work that the panel went into, into producing it, and I really think that I agree with the vast majority of the recommendations here, which is quite nice to me because they are largely in line with the administration, the previous administration's amendments last time, when there was quite a seismic shift in the allowances. And at that particular point in time, when those allowances were changed by the administration, there was a lot of foul language used on social media, pigs with their noses in the trough, fat cat, et cetera, and, you know, the pet reporter has actually been repeating them quite recently, rather than actually looking at the members' allowance report this time. So I feel somewhat vindicated that these allowances are largely replicated now by a new independent panel, and they're actually welcomed by the new Liberal Democrat administration as being correct and appropriate, so perhaps the name-calling can stop now as they will be busy receiving those receipts. I did find that there was some difficulty in understanding the report in a certain respect, because there is built in there, there is going to be an inflationary uplift of at least 1.5% once the staff negotiations has been put in place. So I just want to incorporate that in some of the figures and say that from where we were last time with the report, incorporating all of the changes, the leader will get £846 more a year, deputy leader £701 more a year, chairs of Policy and Service Committee £687 a year extra, and their vice chairs £530 a year extra, increase for the planning, audit and pension chairs of £1,011 a year, and a whole £8,000 more a year more for invention of four more combined authority positions. So whilst some people have been tweeting about the massive savings of 60-odd thousand, which is an accurate figure, being saved, actually on an individual basis, most people are getting much more. And I say inaccurate because it doesn't include the 14,000 that's been taken away, that is the minimum, that the one and a half percent will devolve. So why on earth is the meeting, why on earth is the overall position less than it was before, considering all the increases? Well, that's because we've done, the new administration has done away with committee meetings from seven to five. So if you had a company and you were working a seven-day week and said you'd go down to the five-day week, would you expect to get the same pay? Well, of course, the IRP has recommended it, it's been accepted by the new administration, so that seems fine, doesn't it? So we're happy with that. And the other point, of course, if you go from quarterly, monthly meetings down to quarterly, so that's a third, and still get the same amount of pay, that's fine as well. So there's probably 40 or 50% less work going in, but the IRP has granted the same, and I'm glad to note that the new administration is perfectly happy with that, and so am I, because I think it's fair and appropriate. So I'm happy to support this, Chair. I just thought there were some points that really needed ironing out today.
Thank you for those points of clarification. I believe, yes, councillor, you wish to speak? Councillor Turner?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I've never, in all the years I've been a councillor, voted for a rise in any level of council allowance, so I won't be voting for this today. But, and I'm too tired of saying this actually, because I know I'm speaking on deaf ears all around me, but the reason why we are held in contempt by so many members of the public, councils in general, is because we insist on language, like was just said by the leader of the Lib Dems, we didn't raise the council tax enough last time while then fleecing our nests. It's just disgusting, and we do it over and over and over again. Now, you can make the case that we've made some cuts. Of course, you cheated by cutting actually some positions that suited you. It's not a real cut, but still I welcome it, because it's a bit cheaper for the taxpayer. But to then give other people rises, you know, in the face of this pandemic which has cost the country billions, which we're going to have to pay back, all you're doing is layering on, and I can see where it's going now, you're going to have the eye-watering tax rises every year, and it's the poorest and most vulnerable that pay for that. So no, I will not be supporting this today. You should all be ashamed.
Thank you for that. Is there anybody else who wish to speak? Councillor?
Can I say something really, really quickly, and I would like to thank the opposition for agreeing to an independent report as it is for once? That is quite nice. There are some points, and I would like to put that on record, these are points I made during the debate we had in July 2017. They are, they are points I made, and I was welcomed with nods from the Conservative benches at the time, because they agreed. Number one, when councillors stand for office, they need to have a realistic, that doesn't mean completely accurate, but realistic idea of what kind of allowance they're going to get. Otherwise, how are they expected to make the decision to stand for office? The second point that I made was that the role needs to be attractive to people that can afford to do it only for a living wage of some kind. That is something I said four years ago, and I continue to say it now. And, you know, one day I will find Aladdin's Cave, and I will find the genie, and I will ask it as my first wish, can we please take the decision of how much money we are paid out of our own selves? Can we please have an independent government-appointed, independent body that decides based on factors of its own choosing how much we should get? And can we all get in line with that? Otherwise, we're continuing to get these accusations that we're lining our own pockets, when in reality, what we're doing is we're trying to pay people to do a job, people who don't have other sources of income. And these people need to be, need to be able to be councillors, just as, you know, just as anybody should be. And as a result, I'm therefore very, very pleased that we can take independent recommendations as they are, and we promise that we will keep this matter under review as we make changes to the council in line with what the joint administration agreement says. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and best of luck.
Chair, councillor Hoy is indicated to speak.
Right. Thank you for that, councillor, and best of luck with your quest for the genie. Councillor Hoy?
Oh, yeah, thank you. I don't disagree with a lot of what's in here. I take the point of a lot of what people have said is actually true, even though it's in disagreement with one another. It is a ridiculous situation that we're in this every so often, that we have to make these decisions, and you're right, whatever we do, you can't win, you're in a bit of a lose-lose. The reason I don't support this is just because of the part about the combined authority. I don't agree that we should be paying people on the combined authority and allowance. When it was set out, we all, quite a few of us that were worried about it- When it was set up, we all, quite a few of us that were worried about it, and some members of the opposition as well, were saying that this is just going to become another thing with a load of paid posts and loads of allowances, and we were promised, no, 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 it won't be, and then lo and behold, we now got another thing, which is another load of allowances and paid posts. So for that reason, I don't think it's a good idea.
Again, thank you very much for that. Is there anybody else?
councillor Bulat.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to add a bit of context to councillor Machinist's points as well, because we really need to think about who is the politics actually accessible to, and we speak, I've been to countless meetings, speaking about we don't need more diversity in politics. It's not a coincidence that the average age for local government offices is around 59 years old, according to a report I've just seen, and I think I would like specifically to point out that I really welcome the recommendation about parental leave for councillors, because for a lot of younger people in politics, such as myself, politics is often a choice between having a family and going into politics. I'm one of the people in Cambridge who pays over half my monthly income in rent, so we just need to recognise that this affects different people differently, and that's why we need an independent report, so that the report takes into consideration people's various experiences. I just want to say this, to put this on the record, because I get quite emotional when I hear people, well, if it doesn't affect me, it doesn't affect everyone, when some people actually do struggle every day and do this, do this role, actually making a lot of sacrifices in terms of not starting a family too soon, or actually having to have like two part-time roles alongside this councillor work, as I do. So thank you very much for that.
Again, thank you for those comments. Is there anybody else wishes to speak?
Chair, no one has indicated. councillor Hay, apparently.
Thank you. councillor Hay.
Thank you. I, like councillor Hoy, cannot understand why the county should be paying an allowance to people who are representing the county on the Combined Authority Overview and Scrutiny and Audit Committee. You will end up with a situation where people who are representing the county get paid, people who are representing districts do not, because the majority of districts have chosen not to give an allowance. Where does it stop? Do we then start saying, if you represent the county on any outside body, that you're going to be paid allowance? I think this is a slippery slope, and, yeah, I totally disagree with that aspect of it.
Okay, thank you for those comments and observations.
Chair, I have no other speakers, so we could move to the vote.
We can certainly move to the vote. I note that there were one or two dissensions in it, so I will ask all those in favour of the report, please show. Thank you. Against? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine, nine. Abstentions? Two, I think. The motion is carried. Thank you very much for that. We now come on to item eight, the appointment of Vice Chair of Audit and Accounts Committee. Do I have any nominations for the Chair, Vice Chair of Audit and Accounts Committee?
Can I nominate councillor Nick Gay?
I think your hands went up together, actually. Yes, councillor Netziger, I'll give you preference.
And I second councillor Nick Gay, thank you.
You seconded, Chair.
Can we start again? councillor Netziger, who do you propose?
I would like to nominate councillor Nick Gay, please.
Ah, right, thank you. Right, we missed that bit. Now councillor, you're seconding that.
And I'm seconding councillor Nick Gay.
Thank you for the clarity. Do we have any other nominations? Right, that's three sweeps of the rule. No, so councillor is duly elected. Thank you very much. We now come to appointments of outside organisations. Next is item nine, appointments to outside organisations. We have one outstanding appointment for the annual general meeting, and we will also need to appoint a Liberal Democrat representative to the Combined Authority Overview and Scrutiny Committee. I propose to move as Chair the recommendation that councillor... Is there anybody there? Was it something I said? Yeah. I'll get to the point where I recommend that councillor Sanderson be appointed to the Local Government Association, and councillor Michael Atkins be appointed to the Combined Authority Overview and Scrutiny Committee. So therefore, can I ask my Vice Chair, councillor Kindersley, to second that?
So seconded, Chair.
Did anybody want to debate this important issue? No. Well, in that case, I think we'll move to the vote, and I think we can honestly say that, Tom, congratulations. And, Michael, councillor Atkins. Now we come to the motions submitted under Council Procedure Rule 10. Written motions, five motions have been submitted. The first motion has been submitted by councillor Goldsack, and so can I ask councillor Goldsack to move and speak to his motion, a set out in the papers four and five of the council agenda? councillor Goldsack.
Thank you, Chair. I will remain in my seat, which is strange, but I will, and trust everybody can hear me. Every so often comes before council a motion that impacts a specific area within our county, and perhaps one that doesn't go across the whole of Cambridgeshire. I think of waste plants in towns and river crossings in others. I want to highlight to the county exactly what is happening to the good folk in the villages of East Cambridgeshire and West Suffolk. Sunnica is a company established to make money. Now, there's not a great deal wrong with that, however, any company that has plans to make money at the expense of our residents, at the expense of our countryside, and at the expense of traditional village life, has to be wrong. The planned development of this solar farm in East Cambs and West Suffolk is simply wrong. That's not NIMBY, that's not a statement of NIMBYism, it's for us that live in this impacted area, which is why I'm bringing this motion today. Let me give you some facts. The facts are, this is a 2,800-acre solar factory in a beautiful part of countryside. Green energy is easy to support, but look at the facts. Solar panels made in China, then shipped halfway around the globe with a carbon footprint, plus untested and unprecedented battery technology for onsite storage, then the sale of all the generated electricity to the national grid via a connection in Burrell. So what you're talking about is absolutely zero benefit to the residents, to the county, but huge benefits to the founders of Sunnica. Not only is the size and overbearing impact of this scheme totally unacceptable, the consultation process for certain villages, including my own of Islay, has been virtually non-existent. The pandemic situation has allowed Sunnica to do the absolute minimum to attain public consultation, and villages of my home of Islay certainly feel they have not had the fair say. Riverside Park in St Neets is 72 acres. The parish of Huntington and God Manchester in 2011 was 2,765 acres, smaller than this proposed site. The whole of Camborne is 1,030 acres, and the campus of Cambridge University is just 710 acres. Let those sizes sink in, please, and in relation to this being 2,800 acres of fertile agricultural land and backing up onto existing homes and business premises. Nature, the very thing we're trying to protect here, will not just be impacted, but the local wildlife, deer, fox, badger, rabbit, hare, vole, moles and more, will be wiped out by the solar factory. It is really, sorry, is this really the environmental and green investment that we want? Government is committed to a reduction of 78% of carbon emissions by 2035 compared to 1990 levels. This target falls within the sixth carbon budget, which will ensure the UK is on track to the end of its contribution to climate change, and remain consistent with the parish agreement to limiting global warming to well below two degrees. Transforming our energy system is fundamental to achieve the long-term targets. To decarbonise transport, power and heating for buildings requires greater levels of investment and delivery in clean and green electricity if we are to reach a low-carbon future. Generation and storage of renewable energy, including solar and wind, are part of our future energy system, and to deliver long-term targets must be backed up with credible local delivery plans that benefit communities. There is a lot of untapped potential for solar and wind power across Cambridgeshire to generate local renewable energy. There are approximately 350,000 homes across Cambridgeshire and Peterborough. If an average home could retrofit two-kilowatt solar PV system, that would generate 700 megawatts of power, if the same applies to non-democratic residents and businesses. The UK must move towards a planned approach using local area energy planning to inform the scale and extent of what is needed and where, making best use of existing buildings and brownfield sites, and planning for solar PV farms on agricultural land at a scale that's acceptable and sensitive to the countryside. The planned build at Angle Farm Soam that I have championed as CNI chairman, that I have driven to not simply put green power into the network, but to look to deploy for locally good, for powering the local schools, for social enterprise and for powering local businesses, is a great example of working with the local ward, local countryside, and looking to support the local economy for the good of Cambridge and Cambridgeshire. I'm afraid Sunnica does nothing but take, gives nothing. The planning decision for the proposed Sunnica project falls under the legislation for the nationally significant infrastructure projects, and assessed by the Secretary of State. Cambridgeshire County Council has responded...
Time's up.
I'm just coming to an end, Chairman. Cambridgeshire County Council has responded on technical matters such as drainage and highways, but has offered no opinion. I call upon all members here to think about those numbers and think about the motion, and I urge you all to support this motion and back the actions requested.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Goldsack. Do you have a second?
I do, sir.
Chairman, I'm happy to second, I reserve my right.
Thank you very much. Now, I do believe we do have an amendment to that from councillor Dupreeh, so could you put your amendment to the test, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to speak to my amendment in a second, and I believe councillor Nick Gay is going to second that, if that's in order, yeah. Okay, thank you. I wish to propose an amendment to this motion in the form circulated to members. We support much of the sentiment in the original motion, that is why our amendment to it retains the expression of concern at the size and scale of the application, its potential impact on local rural communities, and the limited consultation with all communities resulting from Covid restrictions, and with residents of Islay in particular. It retains also the instruction to the Chief Executive of the council to express those concerns to the Secretary of State, and to copy this letter to the other host authorities. This is clearly a matter of significant impact for communities in much of East Cambridgeshire, so much so that I asked officers of East Cambridgeshire District Council for a briefing on the district council's policy on the important matter of the Sunnica development. The response from the district council was as follows. I am not aware that we have a policy for this. I can only hazard a guess as to why local councillors from the relevant part of East Cambridgeshire should have chosen to bring this motion here today and not to a council they actually control, a council that met just five days ago in this very building.
Point of order, sir.
Please do.
I am not an elected member for East Cambridgeshire, and I brought this motion today.
Thank you very much for that.
I don't think that's a point of order, Chair, but I'm certainly aware that the second of this motion is.
It's personal explanation.
Thank you. A council that met just five days ago in this very building, where no such motion was put forward for debate, or indeed to this council, when they controlled it. To turn to the details of our amendment and the reasons for it. Firstly, we felt it important to reflect this council's increasing ambitions for achieving net zero, and the new context provided by, among other things, Cambridgeshire and Peterborough's Independent Commission on Climate Change. We thought it was important, too, to reflect the level of cross-party support that has been extended to previous and current projects, which we hope will continue into the future. We have spared your blushes by correcting the spellings of Bebraham, Islay, Snailwell, Kennet and Sunnica, and included the community...
Point of order, sir, please. This motion, this motion was co-written by officers. If the lady would like to present the spelling issues to the officers, I'm sure they will learn from their mistakes.
Chair, I'm not sure, again, that that's a point of order. We have set the context of this council's responses to date by quoting from the council's joint response made with Suffolk County Council, East Cambridgeshire District Council and West Suffolk Council under this council's previous administration, and we have added to the resolution a statement of intent to continue to work in partnership with our neighbours and to make joint representations as Sunnica's commercial project develops. We think that's important. But the main reason for this amendment is that a number of the claims in the original motion lack evidence. It's not clear that this council yet has a policy for what size of solar farm counts as human scale. Perhaps it should, but it doesn't yet. The motion mentions development of solar farms on agricultural farmland, but again, it's not clear that the council has existing policy on the balance between different uses of rural land for different environmental purposes, whether for food or fuel. I've made that point a number of times in committee meetings as an opposition member, and maybe it's a debate we need to have, but we've not had it yet. The motion asserts that the scale of renewable energy promised by Sunnica can be achieved instead through a combination of retrofitting solar PV on roofs and smaller-scale solar PV farms. But it's not obvious where the evidence for that assertion comes from, or how the motion can be so confident that we can meet our future energy needs with that mix. But most importantly, the original motion frames the question in terms of a choice for the council. We can choose Sunnica, or we can choose something else. That's a misreading of the situation. We are respondents to a private commercial application, not originators of it, and we are also in the same marketplace as the applicant, constructing our own solar farms for profit, which means that we have to be aware of our position as a competitor and respect our officers' position as they respond professionally on behalf of the council and the community to Sunnica's application. Members opposite will know that this joint administration intends to begin a review of this council's climate change, environment and sustainability strategy, with the aim of hastening its path towards net zero. That is a forum in which a number of these debates can begin to happen, and I really hope the opposition will make a constructive contribution to the conversation. In the meantime, I commend this amendment to members. I very much look forward to it receiving support and to the Chief Executive expressing those well-founded local concerns to the Secretary of State. I hope that this authority will agree this amendment, and I therefore propose and commend it to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
councillor Gay to second, Chair. I would second.
Wanted to reserve your right to speak, did you not?
Oh.
Yeah. What I'm going to ask is whether the proposer of the motion would accept the amendment.
No, sir. Do I get the right to speak to it?
Chair, have you opened the debate?
As the mover of the original, mover of the original motion has the right of reply at the close of the debate on the amendment, but may not otherwise speak on it.
Do I sum up? Thank you.
Okay.
councillor Gay.
councillor Gay, yeah, well, anybody else want to speak on this beforehand?
councillor Schuman.
councillor Schuman.
Thank you, Chairman. It comes as no surprise that there doesn't seem to be a great deal of interest from a number of councillors on this item, because as councillor Goldsack highlighted, this is very much a local issue, which affects the lives of those people where this proposal is going to happen. And for all those councillors, they may have come from different directions today, if you'd have just gone a little bit further south and east, you'd have driven through village after village with signs that say, say no to Sunnica. They don't say, let's procrastinate, let's express concern, let's have a look at the detail and decide how we respond. They say, say no to Sunnica, because they've done their work, they've assessed the impact, and I can assure you, there are professional after professional who have put their time and... put their time and money into looking at what this application means to them and their community. And so here we have an amendment which makes this motion toothless. We had an impassioned proposal from councillor Goldsack, and I think everybody that's sat in this chamber, and I hope everybody that's watching this live stream, will have seen the feeling that has gone into this original, into the original motion, which quite honestly has been absolutely destroyed by this, what I would say is a negating motion or amendment. And we saw then a factual response from the proposer of this amendment, which quite frankly does a huge disservice to every resident who is fearful of the impact that this proposal will have. If anyone is sat here and believes in the true democracy of local representation, then you won't support an amendment by somebody who is unaffected by this proposal. You'll listen to the local councillor, you'll accept the concerns raised, and you'll send a message like Suffolk County Council, like West Suffolk District Council, and I'm sure in time East Cambridgeshire District Council will send, which says, 'Say no to this proposal', which will quite frankly destroy the environment and lives of so many people. So I wouldn't support this amendment, Chairman, because I think it's a real disappointment that this hasn't got politics at heart, it's got a local issue at its heart. And I hope that we can be sat in this chamber at times when there's local issues of the members sat opposite, and we, as a Conservative group, will support those concerns, and we will work with those councillors to make sure we send a clear message that we will stand by the local members to represent their local communities, instead of forcing amendments which quite frankly does nothing but play politics and waters down what was a clear message. So for those reasons, Chairman, I certainly won't be supporting this amendment.
Okay, thank you for that comment.
Chair, councillor Tierney.
Councillor Tierney.
Thank you, Chairman. Chair, sorry, I will get used to it. First of all, I regret the use of the word nimby. I know it was just used to make an explanation, but I don't like it, because there was a time when caring about where you lived and your neighbours and wanting the best for it was considered a virtue, and we seem to have somehow turned that around and have got to the point where we now use it as a criticism of people. And I think it's incredibly damaging, because every councillor sat in this room would be expressing the same concerns if this was their motion about their area. And I just think it's a shame we can't come together on these ones, we can't all support this original motion, because we need to remember that we are elected to represent the people. We aren't elected to represent the big corporations who are going to make a fortune abusing a situation to their benefit that will do nothing to help the local people whatsoever. And I really regret the Labour members in here, because I remember a time when Labour understood predatory big corporations and stood with the common man against them, and that seems to have gone away. Where have those Labour members gone? I miss them. And I didn't always agree with them, for sure, but I miss them. We need to say no to these predatory applications, and we need to say yes to supporting local people about the areas they live in and they love. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Councillor Sharp, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very disappointed with this amendment. It just seeks to push the issue further down the road and gives absolutely no comfort to the residents of Cambridgeshire and Suffolk. This is a proposal for a 500-megavolt solar farm that covers 2,800 acres of prime farmland. Yes, we have a global challenge with climate change, but this proposed development is in the wrong place. And to use 2,800 acres of prime farmland, which we need to grow food for the whole world, is, in my opinion, the wrong place. Residents of my ward are concerned about this proposal, although they're a few miles away from those villages that are more affected. I drove the back road route today through Islay, and I saw all the signs that were referred to by councillor Schuman. I represented East Cambs yesterday at a ceremony at RAF Mildenhall, and I was talking to residents from the Suffolk villages just across the border that are affected by this proposal, and they are incredibly concerned about it. So it's not just East Cambridgeshire, it's Suffolk as well. I cannot support this amendment, Chairman.
Chair, councillor Cowan.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, gosh, what an amendment this is. There was a decent emotion to start with, but by the time it finished with a pen, there's barely a word left standing without a rewrite. All of that effort painstakingly ripped apart, paragraph by paragraph, just so at the end of the day you can say you don't want to be associated with a particular decision, a particular direction. Because the very first motion, unamended, was very clear that this is an inappropriate scale. But what we're left here is writing to the Secretary of State to tell him, 'Gosh, isn't this big'. And do you know why the Secretary of State is considering this application? Because when it's, 'Gosh, it is big', he decides, not the local council. So all you're going to do is send a letter to the Secretary of State to remind him of his job, and I don't think that's anywhere near where the original motion was. I like to point out that if you're going to be serious about climate change, you just don't just jump into the bed with the first corporate venture that comes along. You use some actual scientific-based evidence to plan the best way about it, and local energy planning is recognised as the way forward. So what does this amendment do to that? Well, it strikes out the bit on local energy planning, obviously it's a bad idea. It then writes a new paragraph incorporating local energy planning, because it's a very good idea. But when it comes to recommendations, it's struck out again. So there's nothing in here in the recommendations about local energy planning being appropriate, and Sunnycare would fail on that point entirely. And on consultation, the defence used in the amendment, let me quote here councillor Dupre's words, 'It is disappointing that communities, including Islay, were included late in the initial round of consultation, and that Covid restrictions in force at that time limited the nature of the consultation that could be undertaken'. I mean, that's weak, isn't it? It's really weak. It's so weak, I don't think that this is the sort of words I expect a councillor to use or our officers to help them write. It's the sort of words that the press release department for Sunnycare would use. Perhaps they got their entire advice there, because nobody in the local communities will accept that as a defence for what's actually going in there. But I suppose the answer lies in the nature of the entire amendment. Where's councillor Goldsack sought to actually get this council into a position where it said this was inappropriate? The new administration is advocating an amendment that says, actually, we need a policy to decide what is or isn't appropriate before we could make a decision like this, kicking it into long grass. Well, actually, this is the council, this is all of us. You could make that decision here and today. You know whether 2,800 acres of prime land and biodiversity is worth building solar panels or not, but you're going to dodge that one. The last point I wish to make is about listening to people. We've heard two points today. There's this one, and there was the 81123 question from councillor Bill Hugg. And the response we get and the pact that you've all signed up to is very much about listening to people. Councillor Net Singer earlier said, 'We will listen to the communities, we will listen to the parishes, we will listen to the people'. Well, both on that and on this, that's not what you're doing. You're actually ignoring the wishes of the local people en masse by support if you support this amendment. I cannot support this amendment. It waters down what was a position into something quite meaningless and just perfunctory. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for that.
Chair, councillor Hoy.
Councillor Hoy.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't really going to speak on this, because I've got to be honest, I don't know much about it at all. And when I first saw the amendment, I thought this is just being done kind of like it always used to be. Someone makes a proposal, it feels a little bit uncomfortable, and you don't want to vote for it because you don't want us to get the credit, but you don't want to vote against it, so you amend it, and that's kind of the way forward. And I get it, don't get me wrong, I get it, that's politics. So that in itself I would understand, but what scares me the most is the removal in a number of points where it specifically says to ensure its objections to the proposed Sunnycare scheme are known, and it crosses that out. Now, that suggests to me that we don't want to make unknown our objection to the proposed Sunnycare scheme, and that to me is absolutely frightening. This council has clout. When we say something, it does matter, and we had a similar thing with the Wisbeach incinerator. This council, which you all supported us on when we brought this motion, and thanks for that, I mean, some of the new members obviously weren't here, but there was a unanimous agreement amongst all parties that this awful project was being done to a town. And now there's a similar situation, really, where there's this thing that's going to generate power that the local residents don't want, that's massive and oversized, and we are not going to say to the Secretary of State that we object to it. It just feels so wrong to me. And I don't live there, I haven't got any axe to grind or any skin in the game, but if I lived in one of these villages, I'd feel absolutely and utterly let down by you all today.
Right, thank you.
Chair, I have no other people who have... Oh, councillor Thurgood.
Thank you, Chair. This has been described as a local issue several times in this debate. It's only a local issue if you ignore where electricity comes from. 25% of electricity used to power this building and all of your homes comes from a gas-powered power station in Little Barford, just outside St Neitt's. It has 200-foot-high chimneys, which can be seen from St Neitt's, from Abbotsley, from Tozland, Yelling and from rural communities for miles around. But it's not a question of aesthetics, the problem is one of the climate emergency. Little Barford Power Station, which produces 25% of all electricity you use, burns 127 million pounds of gas every year, emits 3 million tonnes of CO2 a year, and that's over 300 tonnes an hour, or 5 tonnes every single minute. Burning that quantity of gas doesn't come for free. Recognised industry estimates say that quantity of, burning that quantity of gas will kill about 11 people a year. Some of those people will be killed in the production process, but others will be killed in local communities from the noxious, nitrous oxide emissions causing breathing difficulties. If we're going to minimise the consequences of climate change, we're going to need to burn much less gas and ultimately shut down Little Barford Power Station. And we can only do that through much more solar, much more wind and much more nuclear. At the environment and green investment impact, I can understand the concerns of residents. This Sunnycare solar plant will only deliver about a sixth of the power generated by Little Barford Power Station, but over its lifetime it will generate almost zero toxic emissions, yeah, and probably about, in terms of CO2 emissions, it's probably going to be the equivalent of a few months of emissions from Little Barford Power Station. So I will be voting in favour of this amendment.
Thank you very much for that.
Councillor Wilson, Chair.
Councillor Wilson.
Chair, thank you. I just wanted to pick up some points that the opposition have made, because there seems to be some confusion in their ranks about what the amendment and the original motion said. But if I just repeat some of the phrases, and I apologise if I've got some of the words slightly wrong, but most recently councillor Hoy said, 'Not say that we're going to object to it'. Well, the motion didn't say we're going to object to it, it said we express concern. Mister councillor Goldsack said, 'It's inappropriate'. Again, we're not saying we're going to object to it, we're going to express concern. Councillor Count, and I think he was quoting councillor Dupre here, slightly facetiously said, 'Gosh, it's big'. Okay, well, we agree it's big, but the Tory motion does not say we object to it. And councillor Schuman said, 'All the signs around here say, 'Say no to Sunnycare'. The motion did not say, 'Say no to Sunnycare'. The motion and the amendment still say the chief executive should write to the Secretary of State to express concern at the size and scale of the proposed solar farm on agricultural farmland. That is the nub of the issue which we are talking about today and for which the amendment entirely balances the arguments. Thank you.
Chair, councillor Hay has indicated to speak, and councillor Gay has indicated to speak, but he did second and reserve his right to speak, so you may want to leave him till second last.
I will, indeed. Councillor Hoy.
Chair, point of order. The secondor has the right to reply at the end of the motion. He's just indicated he wished to speak.
And I, councillor Count, said he will at the end of the debate. Councillor Hoy, you wish to...
I believe it's councillor Hay.
Oh, sorry.
This happened at the last council meeting also. I kept on being called the wrong name or being overlooked, so please try and refrain from doing it again. I just wanted to ask councillor Wilson, are we reading the same motion?
No.
Because the motion I am reading, and I'm looking at the amended motion, in the last two paragraphs, clearly struck out, it says, 'To ensure its objections to the proposed Sunnycare scheme are known', and it's been struck out in both paragraphs. So please, if you are going to get up and speak, make sure you're looking at the right motion, please.
Thank you for those words of clarification.
Chair, I only have councillor Hay, sorry, councillor Gay and councillor Goldsack.
Councillor Gay.
Thank you, Chair. This motion before us from councillor Goldsack epitomises everything that is wrong with the Conservative Party's environment and climate change policies, whether it be at the national, the regional or the local level. There are warm words and lip service about the climate emergency that is engulfing us and a willingness to credit themselves with small projects like the Carport solar panels at their folly in Alcombebray. And we've also heard again the notorious climate denier trope about the costs of manufacture and shipping of solar panels. They are nevertheless twelfold, at least, more carbon-friendly than alternatives. So when it comes to projects like big solar farms that will have a substantial impact, generating 500 megawatts of clean electricity and preventing the release of tens of thousands of tonnes of carbon dioxide, they sit there in brutish opposition while their government approves fracking projects and renewed fossil fuel extraction. Let's be clear, the planning decisions relating to Sunnycare will be made by Conservative ministers in bays, but this authority has an important and influential advisory and consultative role. The joint administration will ensure that all legitimate concerns of local residents will be addressed and the plans appropriately modified. As someone who lives near the planned new water treatment plant, I empathise with the people of Islay, Soham and Kennet, but change is necessary and the transition to zero carbon is urgent. I'm sure the residents in these villages will understand the existential threat that much of East Anglia will become part of the North Sea within a century if nothing is done. To conclude, this motion from councillor Goldsack is nothing more than sound and fury that signifies nothing. Or to put it more simply, in a way that the Home Secretary, Mrs Patel, could understand, it is a gesture of politics. I therefore urge members to support our amendment, the joint administration of Labour, Liberal Democrats and independents amendments, which will allow the concerns of residents to be expressed forcefully to the minister through the chief executive officer of the county council.
Thank you very much for that.
Chair, it's councillor Goldsack to sum up as proposer of the amendment.
No, 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 no.
As proposer of the motion, yeah. Yeah, that's okay, thank you. First things first, interesting words from Mr Gay, who's obviously read up and listened very adroitly this, because I live in the village of Islay, not Ireland, Islay. But then again, you know, if you live in the city, you probably don't know about Islay, and you probably don't know about the impact that it's going to have, not just to Islay, but to Snailwell, Kennet, Chipnum, Fordham, Berwick, Reach and the West Suffolk villages just the other side of the river. Let me tell you something. A speech from John F Kennedy in 1961 said, 'The only thing necessary for triumph of evil is for good to do nothing'. That is what you are voting for with this amendment. Sunnycare takes from our communities, takes from our land, takes from the mouths of our children and gives income to the minority of shareholders. This amendment basically endorses this approach. Do not be fooled into thinking this is a green project just because it's solar. I hear the words and I look forward to the motion on destroying and replacing... I hear the words, and I look forward to the motion on destroying and replacing the Barford Energy Plant. Bring it forward, I look forward to it. This amendment politicises an attack on East Cambs and West Suffolk residents' way of life, the countryside, the local nature, and generational living. Support the amendment, and you are telling my neighbours, my friends, and my family, they don't matter, that they somehow don't matter as much as coalition members, ward members. They really don't. They will judge you on this, they will see yourself, Cambs, and city-centric attitudes, once again putting forward a motion to sit on a fence or kick this can further down the road. Simply put, do you like a cup of tea with a dip of a teabag, or do you like it left in for a little while? Because this amendment is a dip of a teabag, it makes it weak. I'm asking you to stop, Sunnycare. Funny enough, I asked that in the, um, motion itself, but that, that seemed to have got missed. Um, and I'm asking you, please, to support the people of East Cambridgeshire, many of whom will be watching this today, many of whom will be watching how you vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I believe that the proposer of the amendment...
Chairman, we move to the vote on the amendment.
Point of order.
Okay.
Point of order, Chair.
Luke Grandy?
Chairman, I request a recorded vote on the amendment.
Chair, we need 14 members to indicate.
14 members, yeah, carried. We will have a recorded vote on this, on the amendment, just so it's absolutely clear. The amendment is on your order paper from councillor Lorna Dupre. So anybody not clear on what we will be voting on? It will be for the amendment, or against the amendment, or abstain?
Chair, Mrs Rehe is ready to take the vote.
Sure. Yes.
Members, when I call your name, as the chair says, could you please answer for, against, or abstain? Ambrose Smith?
Atkins?
For.
Bachelor?
For.
Beckett?
For.
Billington?
Against.
Bird?
For.
Boden?
Against.
Bradnam?
For.
Bulat? Bywater? Connor?
Against.
Corny?
Against.
Costello?
Against.
Count?
Against.
Coates?
For.
Cox Chondron? Criswell?
Against.
Doughton? For. Dew?
Against.
Depray? For. Ferguson?
For.
French?
Against.
Fuller?
Against.
Gardner?
Against.
Gay?
For.
Giles? Goldsack?
Against.
Goodliffe?
For.
Gough? Garry?
Against.
Hathorn? For. Hay?
Against.
Howe?
Against.
Howitt?
For.
Hoy?
Against.
Kindersley?
For.
Jonas King?
Against.
Maria King?
For.
Simon King?
Against.
Maguire?
Against.
Muskeedy? Mills?
For.
Murphy?
For.
Nessinger?
For.
Prentice?
Against.
Ray?
For.
Reynolds?
Against.
Sanderson?
For.
Dan Schuman?
Against.
Josh Schuman?
Against.
Sheila?
For.
Sharp?
Against.
Slatter?
For.
Taylor? Thompson?
For.
Tierney?
Against.
Landeven?
For.
Whelan? Wilson?
For.
We'll just check, chairman.
Chair, the result of the vote is 32 votes in favour, 27 against. The amendment, and no abstentions, the amendment is therefore carried.
Thank you very much for that. Therefore, this becomes a substantive motion. Do we want to debate this any further, or go straight to a vote? Councillor Schuman?
Chairman, I'll be brief, because I think most things were covered in the amendment, the comments. But I just wish to, to say that I intend to vote for this amended motion now, simply because it does something towards sending a bit of reassurance that we have raised some concerns or expressed concerns. I echo my disappointment that, you know, contrary to the ill-advised comments from some Liberal Democrat members, particularly councillor Wilson, this does now fail to object to the Sunnycare application. I'm sure that the...
Chair?
Councillor Wilson, you wish to make a personal explanation?
Personal explanation. The point I was making was that in the recommendations of the original motion, the instruction is for the chief executive to write, to express concern. That's all I was saying. I have now confirmed for my own satisfaction, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the, there is a paragraph that has partially deleted some locally elected county council members have not supported the project, but that's not what the full council is saying, and that's not what the motion is originally recommending. It was to express concern. Thank you.
Thank you, do you accept that?
Thank you, Chair, I'll continue, and I'm sure the record will show that the comments were that the original motion didn't object, which were clearly wrong. I'm sure the public will also note that a number of councillors, including councillor Ferguson and councillor Gay, didn't just stop at saying that this amendment was, as councillor Depray suggested, a way to refine what was a perfectly good motion. They went on to speak of the virtues of Sunnycare, and in many respects, I'm sure the members of the public will have seen the comments which suggest they were supporting the application. This was our fear precisely, so I'm glad that we can now go back as the Conservative representatives and say that we tried our best while we had to hear opposition members and the administration extolling the virtues of Sunnycare. I'm sure that will be very reassuring when I go back and speak to those residents, all of which have the "say no to Sunnycare" signs and are fearful for their lives will be absolutely destroyed by the impact of this enormous proposal. This scale is not the way that we are going to be able to address the climate crisis in this country, and actually flies in the very face of our own strategy, where we have a brilliant offices in, in our environment team, who have spoken about local energy production, smart energy grids, for the communities to be powered in a way which is cutting-edge and forward-thinking, rather than this old-fashioned idea that we can put all of the power in one place and pump it around. We know that doesn't work, it's old-fashioned. But here we have now a motion which has sadly been watered down, weakened, and amended, but thankfully I can go back to my residence and say, as councillor Goldsack can, we tried our best and others spoke of the virtues of Sunnycare.
Uh, Chair, councillor Hoy indicated to speak next.
Councillor Hoy?
Yeah, thank you. I'd go further than saying they're actually just extolling their virtues. I think actually councillors Gay and Ferguson seem to be shilling for Sunnycare, to be honest with you. What, what surprised me the most about councillor Ferguson's argument was he seemed to be saying, "I don't like a power plant in my area." Fair enough, you know, I can understand that, so build one in someone else's area. Just because something's bad, you don't correct it by doing something also bad in another area, that's just, that's just not how you should do things. The fact of the matter is, and councillor Wilson keeps making different words and...
Councillor Ferguson, you wish your name was mentioned?
Yeah, my only point was, I'm not particularly in favour of this application, but I want to put it on record that I am in favour of solar power, I am in favour of wind energy, I am in favour of nuclear energy, and I'm not in favour of burning hydrocarbons that will bring forward the temperature changes which will have a devastating effect on your residents, more than my residents, yeah? So I'm doing this for more, your residents more than my residents. You live in low-lying areas which will ultimately be flooded if we don't address the climate emergency now. This is an emergency.
Chairman, point of order, chairman.
I've finished.
Is this a point of personal explanation? Because it seems to have drifted quite wide of the mark.
Yes.
Can I finish my saying anyway?
That was the point of personal explanation.
Chairman, it wasn't. Chairman, councillor Hoy wishes to continue.
Yeah, so I'll just respond to that anyway, because the point of saying that doesn't even make it any better either. It's like me, should I say to people in Wisbeach, "Oh, well, I can't, we don't, in general, we don't want things to go to landfill, so let's do a megawatt incinerator," because, you know, the world's on fire and you must care about other people more than you care about yourselves and your own family's needs and your own health and wellbeing. You know, it sounds great, but you've just said yourself you don't want to do that in your area, and it's just, I've gone today from not even knowing what Sunnycare was, right? Literally, when I read this motion, I had to do some research and find out what they were, to actually now feeling like I want to go and protest against Sunnycare, just from what you guys have said, not even from anything we've said on our side. I just don't understand, you're saying that this isn't about being, again, this is, you are against them. If you are against them, why are you saying things in support of them? Why do you take out the part that says strong objections? It just feels to me that you want this and you're going to support this at whatever the cost.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Tony.
The, councillor Depray was next, followed by councillor Count, and then councillor Tierney.
I do think you're bound, councillor Tony?
Thank you very much. Listening to councillor Schuman, as I often do, I end up feeling that he's somehow in some other meeting, a long, long way away. He's saying two things which are completely internally con, I wish he was actually. He's saying two things which are entirely self-contradictory.
Chairman, 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 I'm sorry. Is that kind of language appropriate?
You have the advantage over me, as I was speaking to my vice-chairman then.
Chairman, to reiterate, councillor Depray said that she wished that I, as a councillor, were in a meeting somewhere further away. I don't think it's the kind of language you expect.
It's not what she said.
I think we will continue.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Schuman has said two things which are directly in contradiction to each other, or apparently so. Firstly, he is suggesting that as a result of this debate today, this council is expressing support for the Sunnycare proposal. And yet, he is saying that he will support the motion as amended. Now, both of those can't be simultaneously true unless he is preparing now to go out and tell his constituents that he is voting for something that supports the Sunnycare motion. Either he's going to vote for it, or it's going to support the Sunnycare motion, the proposal, but not both.
A point of personal explanation, chairman.
Please.
In my statement, I said the comments from members were in support of this, of the Sunnycare application. I said that this motion, I reluctantly will support it because it goes some way to object to it, so, or some way to raise concern. So for absolute clarity, there were comments in favour which I referred to. Thank you, chairman.
You, you did indeed say that you would reluctantly support this, yes. Councillor Depray?
Thank you. Nothing in this amendment, amended motion indicates support for the Sunnycare proposal. Indeed, we have agreed that we are going to ask our chief executive to write registering our concerns, and it has been said that this amendment that has now been incorporated into the motion waters the motion down by simply leaving it as being we're going to write a letter. Let me remind you of the original motion. The original motion had four points to it at the end. It proposed four courses of action. The first one, the ambitions of this council without compromising ourselves as a potential competitor and therefore put compromising officers and putting them into a difficult position. It enables us to make the comments we need to make, it expresses those concerns about the consultation, about the use of farmland, about the size and scale and the effect on the local communities. All of those points, which councillor Goldsack has correctly identified as being significant issues, remain and are retained by this amended motion, and that is why I'm supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Councillor Count has indicated, Chair.
Councillor Count?
Thank you, Chair. Just like councillor Schuman, I reluctantly will support this now amended, weakened, dip-of-a-teabag motion that's in front of us. I strongly object to the fact that people are claiming that somehow or another it is the same as the original motion, and there's been some confusing words on that, but before I get on to them, I just bring out a couple of points. Councillor Nick Gay, the points you raised earlier, I do hope you get to be an MP one day, because a lot of this is about national politics, let's deal with national politics there, and let's try and stick with the local stuff here. Let's not keep tarring this Conservative group as anti-green. The money that the new administration is spending on anti-carbon, uh, carbon-zero measures are the 16 million pounds that you all voted against, those that were here, not yourself, previously. So the only actions that you've done, that are going on in this council, actually Conservative actions, so please don't paint this with that tar brush, but do keep your comments going for what you feel on the national agenda in a more appropriate arena, if at all possible. I have every sympathy with where councillor Ferguson was coming from, very knowledgeable on the subject, it was very plain to see, and I totally agree with him that one day we need to get rid of that gas burner and fossil fuels, no problem with me whatsoever. But the solution to these things lies in clear thinking, and that's where local area energy planning come in, to admit that grid network is not suitable for mass distribution out of one point, and that's why you have local area planning, and that was taken out of the recommendations, and that is one of the reasons why this development is wrong. Councillor Wilson, I mean, we heard it from one person that apparently the original motion didn't object to it. So the original motion had to ensure its objections are known, but on top of that, it said, "The proposed Sunnycare development is wrong for the level of greenfield land required, and has an unreasonable impact." Those were removed as well. It has major weaknesses removed, and has failed local people removed. Well, if you can't tell me that removing all of those strongly worded objections and replacing them with, go on to councillor Depray's point, writing a letter, then I'm sorry, but the people that live in those areas will look at this, look at your amendment, and they will judge you harshly. And councillor Depray's use of my term "writing a letter"
Chairman?
was half a sentence. Oh, he's had his personal explanation three times on the same subject. Those are the words printed in the document.
Councillor Count, I'm going to allow.
Certainly, Chair, sorry.
Chair, when I went to school, I was always told to write precisely and concisely, and if I meant to object, then I would write to object when I write to the chief executive, and I wouldn't write to express concern. The point I'm making is that the amendment and the original motion still say to express concern. So that is exactly what this council has accepted in its motion, and what councillor Schuman is now going to vote to support.
Point of order, chairman, this is not a point of order or a point of personal explanation, it shouldn't be allowed, he's just taking another opportunity to speak. Why is it being allowed?
I wanted to hear what the objection was, but I thoroughly agree, I, you know, sorry, we've got to have better personal explanations than that, councillor Wilson.
Sorry, Mrs Chairman, but I've been... From the monitoring officer on this, because leader of the opposition is going to continually question things that I have said, and I feel it is appropriate for me to have the opportunity to comment back on it.
Can I, can I say, I don't think it was that relevant personally, but carry on, councillor Count.
Thank, thank you, Chair. And one of the things I learnt at school, well, it's probably at the knee of my father's, when you've dug a deep hole, stop digging, because, because if councillor Wilson ever did read this motion, I'm not convinced that he did, the points that I... he did, the points that I was raising about unreasonable impact on the daily lives and the point about ensure its objections and the point about failed local people and has major weaknesses, they all started, those paragraphs start with "the letter to include". So, excuse me, but you're looking at one paragraph, the letter to express concerns, but all the other paragraphs say, "but the letter to include these objections", et cetera, et cetera. So please stop digging and take it like a man. Moving on, compromising officers from councillor Lorna De Pree, inappropriate, this was written with officers, no officers were going to be compromised, and the point I was going to raise about councillor De Pree's comment on mine, it's just writing a letter, I said it's writing a letter saying, gosh, it's big, when the secretary of state's job is to examine this because it is so big. But you know what? The legacy from today, apart from the people who live in the area and see what was actually happened here, is an objection to Sonica development being turned into something that kicked down the cannon, some members obviously hoping that this will be built. The lasting legacy won't be that, it will be the behaviour during councillor Goldsack's speech. He's passionate about this, and he introduced the Kennedy speech, and I think it's abhorrent that members of the new Liberal Democrat administration, councillors Hewitt and Massey, were openly laughing at him at that point. I hope the cameras picked it up, because I do believe that that will be the lasting legacy of today, to laugh at somebody who cares passionately about the people that he is here to represent. Shame on you.
Chair, councillor Tierney has indicated to speak, and councillor Goldsack has the right to sum up, and a number of members have indicated they wish to have a comfort break, so I don't know whether what you wish to rule there, chair.
I think we'll allow councillor Tierney, then councillor Goldsack, then we'll take the vote, and then we will... It's a bit early for a comfort break, but there you go.
Apparently not early enough.
Really? Okay. I stand corrected, well, I sit corrected. Councillor Tierney?
Thank you, chairman. I just really wanted to say, look, I get it, I've been there, you're under a whip, you all have to say the same thing. Look, it's the reality of politics, and I know some will deny there's a whip, we all know there is, and it's absolutely understandable that no member over that side is going to speak against or go against what they've been told to say over an issue that isn't in their area, it's not worth the delicate balance of the rainbow alliance. I get it, look, because I've been there, and I've also been bound by the whip when I've been dying to speak, although with me, not often, as you probably tell. But I would just ask all of you to think, in future, this shoe is going to be on your foot. You're going to be coming to council, asking people to support you for your area on an issue of concern from your constituents. And I won't, personally, I won't hold this against you, I will vote to support your residents in those instances, and I just wish at least one of you would find the courage to occasionally do the same. Thank you.
Councillor Goldsack, chair.
Councillor Goldsack? Thank you, chair and vice-chairman, thank you very much. I've just got a couple of things to say. The actions on the original motion were to the words of the original motion. Those words have been decimated, removed largely, so therefore the actions are on different stuff. That's fact, we've all seen that. Secondly, some people didn't even know the name of the village, and I can understand that, you know, Cambridgeshire is a big area, it's one we all represent and have to make decisions on. This is my ward, this is councillor Schuman's ward, as well, that this affects. The villagers of Isling and the neighbouring villages affected by this, and those across the river in West Suffolk, will remember this. To take the chat, to take the discussion, to take the debate to national and international levels, not representing the people of East Cambridgeshire, your taxpayers, your payers of your allowances that have just gone through, I find it amazing. And quite frankly, we've got a fascinating motion coming later today about the rights of EU citizens. I think we're spending as much, if not more, time on those than those in our own county. And I can tell you now that those people in our own county will not forget this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I now propose to put to the vote the substantive motion, which is the amended motion by councillor De Pree, sorry for that. All those in favour of the amended motion by councillor De Pree. I'm going to go immediately to those against. One. One against. Abstentions. One abstention. That is carried. By popular demand, apparently, we need a comfort break. Can we take a vote on it? All those in favour of a comfort break? Come on, joint party. Okay. Where's my watch? Can we vote back here at 12:30, please? That's 10 minutes, should be quite enough time for all.
As they do in the theatre, and everybody is nearly seated. Welcome back. Hopefully, everybody has been comforted. Thank you, Chairman, or Vice-Chairman. We now come on to our second motion, and this is, I judge them between me. Would you like to present this for us?
Me, thank you, and I believe councillor King is my seconder. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chair. For those who were here from the previous four years, they will remember that I brought this motion a couple of times now. I've been unlucky each of the previous two times for reasons that are too complicated to go into, but third time, one hopes, lucky. I believe local government has a crucial role in lobbying for its own funding. This would be true with any government, but certainly true with a government which has starved local authorities of funding, sustainable funding, and made them dependent on unsustainable one-off grants delivered at the stroke of midnight. I believe, as I said in my previous motions, that the previous administration has failed at this crucial task and failed repeatedly. If Cambridgeshire received the same average funding as the average county council in England, it would get an extra £23 million a year. Forecast growth in gross value added in Cambridgeshire and Peterborough will make the government £5,000 per capita in tax revenue, but only £250 of that money per capita comes back to the local authorities in Cambridgeshire and Peterborough in grants. If all Cambridgeshire and Peterborough public services were fairly funded at the English average, it would make a difference of £200 million a year to public services locally. So as the new administration takes hold, I am confident now that finally we can perform this lobbying role far more effectively than we have done until now. I care passionately about this, and I'm sure everyone here cares passionately about fair funding. So let's get to work. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do you have a seconder?
Councillor King has indicated, Chair.
Yes, I second the motion and reserve the right to speak.
I open this up for debate. Is there any debate on this? Okay, councillor County, you were second there, but Boden first. Yeah, councillor Count.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for bringing this motion forward, councillor Leecy. I hope that everybody can support this. I will be supporting this. I do take a little exception to your words being different to your motion, because previously you failed because you said that the Conservative administration has failed, and you said that in your speech just now, whereas your motion doesn't mention that. So I'd just like to point out where the Conservative previous administration actually succeeded in securing funding, which you failed to with this motion. The other areas of success that we've had, obviously, are not directly to the county council but affect all the residents of Cambridgeshire, and it was the Conservative administration, along with administrations in South Cambs and Cambridge City, that signed off the Cambridge City deal for £550 million to be taken into this area. And if you look at the document, you'll find that I'm the signatory on that document, having been part of that. And if you look at the Combined Authority, which secured £770 million, I, on behalf of the Conservative Party, on behalf of the Cambridgeshire County Council chaired all the meetings, the negotiations with government, was the lead member on that, and secured £770 million for the people of Helped, Helped, not Solo Led, for the people of Cambridgeshire and Peterborough. So I will object to the fact that you say we failed in securing extra finances. There are a lot of other individual measures that MPs have secured, such as the opportunity e-schools funding, but I will concentrate on your motion, which is about a fairer funding formula for councils, something, as you know, I've been advocating for a long, long while. No matter where this motion goes, and I do hope that people will support it, at the end of the day, the one thing that worries me about this motion, and it strikes back to the amendments that the Labour Party in particular have put forward in previous years, is about balancing the budget in February. So I hope you get as much money as we all want. I hope we get bucket lows, and it's not just us that's underfunded. Cambridgeshire is underfunded in all of its public services: the police, the fire, and most importantly of all, the National Health Service of Cambridgeshire is completely underfunded due to historic funding formulas and the way the system operates. So we're attacked on all fronts with the money from here, and these are historic formulas that are responsible. You don't just point to the Conservative government, they're adhering to formulas that haven't been tweaked since the times of Labour, of the joint administration with Lib Dems, et cetera, et cetera. And one of the reasons they aren't able to change the formula to benefit of shy counties such as Cambridgeshire is because of heavy lobbying done by the central London councils, which are mainly Labour-run, that prefer to keep their prime position. But as I say, no matter what happens with this motion and no matter what happens with the fairer funding formula, come February, you have to balance the budget. And in previous years, you've put forward amendments and you've said, but there you go, and we need more money. Well, whilst we may agree with, and we need more money, you still have to balance the budget come what may. And we look forward to seeing how you're going to do that and how we're going to get on with that. You're starting off from a good position. It got mentioned earlier as if it was some kind of painful position from councillor Nettinger, the fact that you've got a £22 million gap to find. That £22 million is one of the lowest ones we've had since 2010. I remember it being in excess of £60 million to be found in one year, the very first year that I've started. And we've done a good job, the previous administration has, of managing those budget deficits without cutting back on vital services, such as your pact says you will keep libraries open. Well, I'd like to point out that we not only kept libraries open, we increased the hours, opened new libraries, and invested in the mobile library service. So just some of the things that we've done. But what I can't understand is you were going to hit the ground running. That was councillor De Prais' comment at the AGM. You're going to hit the ground running, there's a £6.3 million underspend, and you squirreled that away into general reserves rather than spending. You know that you've got a £6 million shortfall in highways funding, and you're just letting that sit there in the bank and letting some months go by. So yes, go ahead and ask for more money, but the first thing you need to do is spend the money you've got. And the second thing you need to do is balance your budget in February. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Boden.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Count said a fair amount of what I wanted to say. I'm pleased to say. However, just to make the point, I found it quite ironic, really, that of all people it should be councillor Machinie who was putting this particular motion forward. No one in this room could or should, in my opinion, oppose fairer funding. We've been arguing for it for years, and it's overdue by years, and there are always excuses, of course, why it can't be done straight away. But one of the strongest reasons why it's failed to be done is that fairer funding involves a re-leveling of the amounts which go to various areas. And that means some areas get more and others get less. And those which get less are predominantly Labour-controlled councils, both in metropolitan areas and also in central London and inner London. And it has to be said that it's been the opposition of the Labour Party which has made it most difficult for us to be able to get fairer funding. So I think that all of us should support this motion, but I'd particularly ask councillor Machinie, as leader of the Labour group, to make representations to some of her colleagues in other authorities to make sure that those of us who do deserve more receive more. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for that.
Councillor Tierney has indicated, Chair.
Oh, Tierney, sorry. Yeah, councillor Tierney.
Thank you both the chairs. I just wanted to say, look, we're all going to support a demand for government for fairer and raised funding, of course we are. I'm disappointed that we feel the need to constantly make these political swipes. I have heard councillor Count bashing on about this for years. You all have. You know he has. All he can do is go to government and make the demands. That's all you can do as well. Now, it might be that this time they listen, although I think if you keep talking about how they are failing us, you're less likely to get a listening ear, but, you know, knock yourselves out. But perhaps this will work. Perhaps they'll just ignore you like they have done in some instances in the past. The point I'm trying to make is if you just brought this motion and said, it's not fair what government give us, let's all ask for more, we'd all have cheered and we'd have moved on. Why do we have to constantly try and score these petty political points? What does it achieve?
That was a sudden and abrupt end by yourself, but thank you for those few kind words.
Next time, I'll declare my ending, Chairman.
Councillor Howard.
Thank you very much and good morning to all. I find it quite strange, really, to hear the leader of the opposition say he's a great advocate for what this resolution puts, when they actually voted against it twice. And I hope that one of the other speakers will actually say why they voted against this when they were in charge of the council and then voting for it, now we are. For years, in four years of the previous administration, they failed to influence government to give the fairer funding for Cambridgeshire. And as councillor Tierney has just said, they ignored you. It's nice of you to admit it. That £23 million that councillor Muschini referred to, that we're sure compared with other county councils, would be enough to fill 230,000 potholes, and therefore latches to us about how the highways budget is spent, I think, full-far short. And put on top of that, that £82 million cut in revenue support grant now zero, a 60% drop in government funding to Cambridgeshire under the period of the previous Conservative administration. That's £350 for every band-deep council taxpayer in Cambridgeshire, or alternatively the equivalent of an 18% increase on their council tax. And so again, let's hear no lectures from the opposition in favour of the council taxpayer who has been so badly sold short under their influence. And I find it absolutely fanciful that this is all the fault of Labour councils in London. You know, are they saying the leader of their own party listens more to Labour metropolitan boroughs than they do to themselves? I don't believe that, and I don't think anyone listening or watching will. Add on top of that the legacy they have given us, and councillor Count, you give a very, very partial view of your own record. In the last budget papers that you set, there was an £81 million budget cap over the course of the last four years, a £6 million gap in the budget that you set earlier this year, and by your admission again today, a £22 million gap for ourselves in our first budget next year. And the idea that we should be irresponsible with reserves, as you suggest, I find, again, fanciful in that you left us with the minimum possible reserves under the policy of the council. And yes, this is a government of your party. And so don't simply complain about the fact that our health service is the third lowest funded in the country, that our police have lost 30% of their funding in the year since 2010, or we have some of the lowest schools funding in the country. Take responsibility for the actions of your own party. And Chair, I heard a call earlier in the day to stop name-calling from Mr. Count, from councillor Count. I would happily agree to that, and yet in their contributions today and in the resolutions they put down, they consistently call this council's administration a Lib Dem or Lib Dem-led administration, when they know it's a joint administration, not a coalition, and not a rainbow coalition either. And I've clearly it's an attempt to try and divide the Labour Party and the independent group from our Lib Dem colleagues in the administration. It's such an unsubtle one, it really isn't going to work. But carry on doing it if you must. And I thought, how can we respond? Should we just call you conservative losers every time because you lost the election and you're clearly...
Can we keep to the point, please?
Struggling to come to terms with that. So Chair, I do think that the opposition should take responsibility for the financial legacy they have imposed on us in the new administration and for this council. They should take responsibility for the party of government, which is their party, and they should take responsibility for their own words. Yes, they did vote against our resolution from councillor Muschini in 2019 and 2020. Today, they say they will vote for it, but for them to say, for councillor Count to say today that they did a good job, I'm afraid the facts don't bear out. What this resolution does today is to put an honest picture of the financial mess that they have left us in at the end of four years of their resolution, and a resolution which whilst defeated on two previous occasions with this joint administration of independents, Lib Dem and Labour, we will pass.
Right, thank you.
Councillor Schuman, Chair.
Councillor Schuman.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just start by saying, perhaps if councillor Howard may have been overseas and missed, that councillor Count spearheaded the campaign for fairer funding consistently and was the voice of fairer funding, and as was recognised by the county council network time and time again, while councillor Howard was probably wasting taxpayers' money. So I take objection to the fact that this is something new, or this is something which is, that we have in any way not championed. This is something which we championed more than any in trying to get fairer funding. But I repeat councillor Count's request to the Labour group to write to your MPs and ask them, because they're the ones that will make the decision. It's not about the metropolitan boroughs, it's the central government that will look at this formula. So if you are really, really behind this motion and passionate about fairer funding, please do write to your MPs and tell them that this is what you want, because we've done that and we'll continue to do that. And if the Lib Dem members want to do the same, I've got a couple of first-class books of stamps that'll probably cover yours. So we absolutely will support this motion because it's the right thing to do, but echo the absolute objection that this is in any way a one-party political stance. Labour governments had ample opportunity to look at the fairer funding formula and failed to do so. Let's not carry on going over the politics of they didn't do this and the other group didn't do that. Let's go with the united voice together to say that we believe for the residents of Cambridgeshire, we deserve fairer funding.
Thank you very much for that. I have three more speakers.
Councillor King.
And then I will put it to the vote.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm happy to hear that the motion is supported by all parties present here today. And as a seconder to this motion, I just wanted to add my voice also as a vice-chair of children and young people committees to one area which is woefully underfunded across Cambridgeshire, and that is the education, the schools across the county, and especially so-called high needs block, that is the children and young people with special needs and disabilities. We've heard some statistics today about Cambridgeshire being one of the lowest in terms of funding the police force, Cambridgeshire being in the lowest ranks in terms of NHS. We also, of course, are number 145 out of 151 local authorities in terms of funding our schools, and currently running a deficit of around £27 million for financing children with special needs, disabilities, and others. So the number of these children is rising, and there was an increase of 37% in the last 12 months alone. If no action is taken to address the Cambridgeshire funding formula by the government, the deficit is set to rise further. And of course, these are not just numbers. Behind the numbers, there are children and young people with deteriorating physical and mental health, there are families brought to the brink of economic collapse, and as a result, there is also growing pressure of other council and government services. I'm ending with two quotes from parents councillor Goodlifer and I received since we have been appointed to the children and young people committee. Quote one is, "I have four children, two of them have special education needs and disabilities. One of my children has not attended his secondary school since December 2020 due to significant mental health difficulties that the school could not meet need for. In the last seven years, we have personally come up against many barriers preventing our eldest son from getting access to support he so desperately needed. This lack of support has caused significant harm to him and have increased his educational need." And quote two, "My son's school placement has broken down and his medical and send needs have deteriorated. I'm unable to work. I'm applying for carers allowance. He has developed moderate anxiety and low mood. He is 10 years old." So I will wholeheartedly support this motion, and I'm, as I said, heartened to see that across this room, everyone will as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And finally, councillor Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I welcome this motion by councillor Muschini. I'm delighted that we all appear to be behind it, and also recognise the work that the previous administration did to try and get us a better funding deal. It's been historic, hasn't it? I think since going back to the 1980s, Cambridgeshire always seems to miss out. And yes, we should write to our Members of Parliament in Cambridgeshire. One of them, of course, is the Chief Secretary to the Treasury. He was the minister in charge of public expenditure. So I've no doubt our colleagues in Fennan will be discussing this with him at some length. It does need to be sorted, and I hope very much this will help. Thank you.
Chair, councillor Machinie, as the proposer of the motion gets to finish.
Right, fine. Councillor Machinie, do you want to...
Thank you. Thank you very much. In the interest of getting home before the month of August, I will keep my final comments quite brief. I would like to thank the chamber in advance for the support that I seem to have been promised. A couple, just a couple of points. Councillor Count raised city deal money. Well, it's quite right to raise that. We live in a country where money doesn't come through local authorities anymore, it comes through business boards, LEPs and city deals, and we absolutely have to live with that. We also know that we have to live and in fact work with our partners in the Combined Authority, and I will be quite surprised if anybody wants to defend the record of the previous mayor in the way that he spent his money, and to the point where he was refused anymore. So we do need to do better there as well, and I hope we will. I have heard the pie argument many, many times. The way that we get more money is not to go knocking on the door of some of our most deprived areas. We were told, and we have especially been told this by members of our government, that as a result of Brexit... as a result of Brexit, we were going to be able to manage our finances more independently. The pie is no longer a problem. The government can address growing needs and varying demographics everywhere without the need to take away from someone and give to somebody else. So I hope that that's what we will be able to see. I will finish there, but thank you very much in advance for your support.
Thank you for summing up. We now come to the votes. I do get the impression that practically everybody supports this, so could I have a show of hands, support for the motion? Put your hands down, please. Anybody against? Any abstentions? Oh, anonymous. Right, well done. We now come to the next motion by councillor Dupree. Would you like to present your motion to the council, please?
Thank you very much, Chair. "There will be no change for EU citizens already lawfully resident in the UK," said the Leave EU campaign in two thousand and sixteen. "These EU citizens will automatically be granted indefinite leave to remain in the UK and will be treated no less favourably than they are at present." Needless to say, it's not been exactly like that. EU citizens lawfully resident in the UK, in some cases for many decades, have been required to apply to remain in their homes, their jobs, their country. Application is only possible online with no physical proof of status, and the deadline for applications has now passed. Many EU citizens in the UK have not yet applied or received confirmation of application under the EU settlement scheme for a variety of reasons. Some of these are children. There are forty-three children in the care of this council who are eligible to apply to the settlement scheme, and fifteen of those were still awaiting a Home Office decision after the deadline had passed. Some will be adults in our care homes as residents or indeed as staff. News emerged yesterday of a Spanish care worker, not to my knowledge in Cambridgeshire, who had been sacked by her employer because she had not yet received her official certificate of application. She had been working and paying taxes in this country for forty-four years. Her employer chose to dismiss her just in case, rather than face a penalty for continuing to employ her. And some may simply be unaware of the need to apply, particularly in view of the assurances they were given five years ago, that their indefinite right to remain would be automatic. The consequences of not successfully applying under the EU settlement scheme are severe: loss of home, job, access to the most basic services such as healthcare. This administration wants it known that EU citizens are welcome in Cambridgeshire. We recognise our responsibility towards those who need our help in completing the application process to the EU settlement scheme, and the resources we and our partners have at our disposal to help and support them. We will ensure that information about late application is freely and readily available to those who need it. We will support all those for whom we are responsible as a council to apply, and pursue late application as a matter of urgency for all those who have not yet successfully completed it. We will provide training for our own staff in signposting EU citizens to sources of help, and we will provide information for those such as employers and landlords, whom the government has faced with serious penalties for not policing the status of those EU citizens with whom they come into contact. Councillor Alex Bulat and I have worked together to bring this motion to members today, and I am delighted that councillor Bulat will be seconding it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Do you have a second?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm seconding the motion, and I reserve the right to speak in the debate as well. Thank you.
Councillor Bowden has indicated, Chair.
Councillor Bowden.
Thank you, Chair. I massively support the motion which we have on the papers before us today. I believe it is absolutely essential that all those who can register for regularisation of status do so, and that where anyone may have fallen through the gaps, that where it is possible, that position is rectified. I very much welcome the EU settlement scheme, because it gives a formal process for regularisation of the status of all of our residents who have come from EU countries. And we have within Cambridgeshire residents from every single EU country, but in parts of Cambridgeshire, in much of Cambridgeshire in fact, there is a significant number of residents who particularly have come from the Eastern European countries, and that's certainly the case so far as Finland is concerned. And we are very proud in Finland of the efforts we have made, both to integrate residents into our community, to have one community, not lots of communities, but also to ensure that as many individuals as possible have registered in the EU settlement scheme. This motion in resolves A asks for work to take place with partner councils to deal with late applications, and I can assure you that as far as Finland district council is concerned, we would be extremely keen to work with the county council if this motion is passed. And I think that it is necessary. We haven't yet got all the figures available. Well, the deadline for ordinary applications finished, as is stated in the report, on the thirtieth of June, and the national figures, in fact, the national figures as broken down by country of EU origin, have been published as of the thirtieth of June. But the figures for each individual local authority area have only been published up to the thirtieth of March, and the thirtieth of June figures unfortunately won't be available until next month. But on those thirtieth of March figures, whilst generally and across the whole country we are seeing far more applications than had been anticipated, and as I said before, the more the better, we really would like one hundred percent to register, I have to say that there has been some inconsistency even across the county in Cambridge City. So I very much hope that extra resources will be given as a result of this motion to Cambridge City to ensure that wherever there have been gaps, that we do fill them, especially so far as the EU citizens from Eastern European countries are concerned. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for that.
Councillor Tierney.
Thank you, Chair. Earlier in this meeting, it was said that perhaps I should be referred to as a conservative loser because we lost the election. And I was amused by that, because obviously I won my election, which is why I'm here. And in fact, the Conservatives won more seats than all the other parties. You simply had to band together to take control. So I'm not sure loser is the right word. I am getting to a point, Chairman, I promise. I was amused to be called a loser by someone who used to be an MEP, because that's Brexit has put an end to that nonsense. That is really losing. But the point I'm trying to make here is, I live in Wisbeach, I know quite a lot of Eastern Europeans. And I wouldn't say everyone's the same, because of course people are all different to one another. But one thing I have noticed about Eastern Europeans is they are very self-sufficient, they're very determined, they're very hardworking, and they're very sceptical when the government or agents of the government purports to try and help them. Now, I will be supporting this motion, because I do want to treat everyone fairly, and because I do value all my Eastern European friends and neighbours. But I would simply point out that they're not going to be fooled by your schmoozing of them. They know what you're playing at. Thank you.
Councillor Hoy.
Thank you. I just want to take a little, few issues with a couple of things councillor Dupree said which aren't entirely correct, I don't believe. Firstly, there was discussion that there's no access to service for people who have not received settled status. Now, my understanding is that's incorrect, because services delivered by GP, treatment for contagious diseases, and emergency treatment in hospital are free of charge to everyone, regardless of your immigration status. So there is treatment available. Secondly, I don't believe it's correct to say that there's not been much help. I believe that particularly in Finland, that we have done a lot of help, and we've had a great success. I'm also concerned actually about how useful this will be as an exercise. I think the majority of people that have wanted to sign up have signed up. There are a number of people that just won't sign up. We've had, we've got cases in Finland where we've had, we've been out as a council, we've had the Home Office come out, we've had lots of people come out, and they just don't want to, they just don't want to apply for settled status. And what do you do in that instance? You know, no matter how much help you give, how much support you give, they just don't want to. And I think that's going to actually be a real problem, not just for us as a district, but other county as well, because obviously there is, particularly in terms of rough sleepers, when there's substance misuse, drinking, lots of different things, obviously then potentially puts a cost on social care. And I don't think this will seek to address that. However, the principle behind it, I actually think, is a very good one, and the purpose behind it, which is, we should be supporting people. Many of our Eastern European friends and neighbours, which I have many, do have a right to be here. They live here now, they work here, they have families here, they're owning homes here, renting homes. They do deserve to have settled status now, and so obviously I'll be supporting this motion.
Chair, councillor Coxcondrum. Councillor Coxcondrum.
Thank you. Anita Grotkovich, as many of you will know, is director of the Rosmini Centre in Wisbeach, which offers advice and information and support for all nationalities, and particularly Eastern European, as you said. Anita told me there are many people, for a variety of reasons, who have not yet applied for settled status, who are awaiting decisions regarding settled status, or who have been granted pre-settled status but are struggling to obtain support. "We are dealing with inquiries daily," she said, "many of which involve children of parents who have applied for settled status but who were unaware that their children needed it too. We are seeing a number of migrant workers who came to the UK ten to twelve years ago as single adults, who have since married, had children, and are now living in Finland, and of course across the whole of Cambridgeshire. Other than a birth certificate, they have no evidence or ID for those children, and need considerable support in completing the application online. There are agencies and private individuals in Wisbeach, and I'm sure in other towns too, she says, who are more than happy to help with applications at a cost of, in some cases, a hundred pounds per person, only to find that the application hasn't been completed correctly, or in some cases hasn't actually been applied for. Many people have been granted pre-settled status and will at some point in the future need to apply for full settled status, but without appropriate support will be unable to do so, and so as a consequence lose their existing status. Steph Martiston Barker is the CEO at Cambridge Women's Resource Centre. And I know many of us here are committed to raising awareness, supporting survivors, and preventing domestic abuse, with many here also dedicating themselves as white-ribbon ambassadors. Steph told me how not being a British citizen has an incredibly unfair impact on women in particular due to the Domestic Abuse Act and housing legislation. Women found rough sleeping with no citizenship will be deported." And I quote Southall Black Sisters in saying that the Home Office has admitted as much by stating that its rough sleeping policy is justified, even if it leads to discrimination towards migrant women fleeing abuse. Steph said that this is a huge issue in Peterborough in particular, but has also increased the risk for women in Cambridge to stay with people, men, who ask for sex for rent or county lines involvement, which increases the risk to women right across the county. Angie Stewart is CEO for Cambridge Women's Aid, supporting survivors of domestic abuse in Cambridge City, South Cambridgeshire, and East Cambridgeshire. Angie is extremely concerned that women living in an abusive relationship will often have little autonomy in their life. So actions around benefits and immigration rights will be entirely managed by their controlling partner with no information shared. Angie stressed that it is vital as a community that we seek to take every step to impart information about the current window of opportunity to apply for EU status. Otherwise, we know that the most vulnerable will be unable to exercise this right at great cost to themselves and to any children. Angie said she was pleased to hear that the council would ensure that all of those in receipt of social care will be encouraged to make that application. She also wanted to raise the need for the council to anticipate the support that a victim of domestic abuse will need if making a late application. They are likely to have additional complexities and challenges that will mean their application will not be swift or straightforward. And she stressed that there will be, therefore, probably be a resource implication for the council under the section seventeen of the Children Act or other duties to prevent destitution that may require financial support. Ideally, this should be considered and made readily available, so not to delay the provision of the necessary support for a family needing to find a place of safety and resources to live on due to waiting for their application for settled status to be decided. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Councillor Sanderson. Councillor Sanderson.
Councillor Sanderson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I thought councillor Coxcondrum spoke very eloquently earlier, and it was very interesting to hear her remarks. And of course, we're working together along with other colleagues on the Communities Committee. And I think the wording of councillor Dupree's motion, particularly when it talks about developing a targeted programme through our Think Communities team, is absolutely correct. Working on our relationship with district, city, town and parish councils, and very kind of councillor Bowden to offer his support at Finland, which will certainly be taking up, and also the work our libraries can do here, they are vital community assets. And in fact, we're already in anticipation of this motion being passed, the committee and our team, Adrian Chapman and others, are already working on a delivery plan, and we will be sharing that with members very soon. Thank you.
Thank you for that progress report.
Councillor Count, Chairman, has indicated to speak, and councillor Bulat reserved her right to speak, and councillor Dupree has the right to sum up.
Councillor Count.
Thank you, Chairs. Yeah, I'd just like to pick up on one of the last points, and it's in the motion about utilising of the libraries and, you know, the great vision that we had to ensure that not only did we keep our libraries open, increase the hours, and open some new ones, but also for those rural areas to invest in our mobile libraries, which will also play a vital part in this. So we're glad that, both that and, I might add, the creation of the original Communities and Partnership Committee, which was voted against, will have gone a long way into securing the help that is so desperately needed in this in the past, and will be moving forwards with this motion if supported. The motion does seem eminently sensible to me, and there is a huge list of good proposals in here. In fact, they are from A to H. There is quite a lot of stuff going on, which I approve of. But the one thing that concerns me is whether this is going to be confused with gesture politics as opposed to actual real work streams. And the reason I ask that is this county council, it is a very efficient council, there's no other way to describe it. The fact that through the funding circumstances it runs a hundred million pounds less than the county average per capita proves that it's an efficient council, the outcomes are good whilst the actual expenditure is low. And that means that our officers work incredibly hard. They do, and I think they're absolutely fantastic, and they deserve all of our support here, and our thanks for the way that they work. So normally, if you're going to throw a whole load of new extra work onto somebody, you either think that they've got a gap in their schedule, or you find some extra funding. And the one thing missing from this motion is all of this extra work, no extra funding. So is it gesture politics, or is it actually that they're going to have to give up on some of their day-to-day work in order to accommodate this? So that is my only real concern, the fact that some people maybe might confuse this with just something to look good about rather than pushing this through. But the other reverse side of the coin is, seeing as you haven't allocated any money, what is it that we won't be doing to those people in need out there that we normally do at the same time? So barring that caveat, I don't really expect the officers to work harder to fill this gap, I expect, because they're all already working hard. But I do approve of all the principles of this and the actual work programme. So if you can find some money for it, that'd be even better. Thank you.
Thank you for that interesting point, councillor.
Bulat.
Bulat. You deserved your right to speak. Do you want to take that reservation?
Thank you, Chair. Before I start making just a couple of substantive points, I would just like to reply to the comment you just made just before the break. I am one of the, quote, "those", unquote, people who comes from the EU, and in fact, I'm the first Romanian-born county councillor in the UK, so I'd really like to take this opportunity to say welcome to all people from the EU and all migrants who choose to come to live in our county and make the UK their home. It's not really a choice between supporting us or them, because EU citizens are us. Some of us are actually in this council today as elected representatives. One in six people in Abbey, in my division, are EU citizens. So EU citizens are us, they are our communities in Cambridgeshire and beyond. On the second point, as someone who spends pretty much all my free time, as limited as that is with two part-time jobs in addition to politics, actually advising EU citizens for years, providing free immigration advice for people as an immigration adviser, I can also ensure councillor Count that this is not gesture politics for me or for the joint administration. I'm really pleased to second this motion, which really proposes some very practical, pragmatic solutions to ensure that fewer EU citizens are left behind the EU settlement scheme, and of course, we'd like no EU citizen to be left behind the EU settlement scheme. I would like to thank everyone who spoke in the debate, and it's really good to have cross-party agreement on this, and this was indeed at the national level as well, an issue where there is cross-party agreement nationally as well in terms of the EU settlement scheme policies. And it's also very good to hear examples of lived experience and quotes from people from, that councillor Coxcondrum... from that councillor Coxcondron quoted, from people who actually work every single day with migrants on the ground and actually know what they're talking about when they say that support is still needed. I'll just give one brief example in my less than five minutes to illustrate the point why some EU citizens may still be left behind the scheme. A Romanian lady living in Cambridge emailed me just a couple of days before the deadline, asking me, "I got settled status, do I need anything else?" So I asked her if she had any other family members in the UK, and she was really confused. She said to me, "What do you mean, I have to apply for my children? I thought children got automatic status because I have status as the parent." Luckily she did apply for her children before the deadline. Now, just a little bit of an imagination exercise for everyone here, what would have happened if the child wouldn't have applied and wouldn't have made a late application in the next few months? The child will grow up, like many other children of migrants in the UK, many feeling British, being British in all but paperwork. And let's imagine the child is now 16 in 10 years' time, applying for their first summer job to work in a shop on Mill Road, and the shopkeeper says, "Well, prove papers please, prove your status." And they say, "Well, actually I don't have status because my parents didn't know I had to apply 10 years ago." These are real issues that I see in my everyday job outside politics that we can actually prevent or try to prevent now by actually informing and reaching out at the local level more effectively. And let's be very clear on the numbers, of course it's really positive that we have so many people applying and already getting pre-settled status, but the reality is, and I've been repeating for years in those EU citizen debates, is that the government actually does not have an exact number of EU citizens in the country. Therefore, by logic, it is impossible to tell exactly how many people are left to apply. So that's the problem here, that we need to make all the efforts necessary to actually cover the ground and make sure people are informed, because we won't be able to say, "Okay, now is job done, now everyone applied," because that exact number doesn't exist by the way that the UK hasn't registered their EU citizen population before. I'll land on this point. For me, the whole discussion around migrants' rights, EU citizens' rights in this case, always comes back to one word, which is empathy, because it's really easy for me or anyone else, especially people who haven't been through the immigration system in their life, to say, "Well, you know, it all looks fine, the figures look fine, let's not provide more support," or, "You know, if I can do it or if my mate can do it, everyone can do this," it's very easy. Just because something is easy for us doesn't mean it's easy for everyone. So the question is, do we have empathy or not? Can we imagine that we are the child of the EU citizen who hasn't applied for status and wakes up without status? And if we do, and if we have that empathy and can actually relate to people in those circumstances, we should really support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. We now come to councillor Dupree to sum up.
Thank you very much, Chair. It's been a very interesting debate and in many respects a very heartening one. I'm grateful for the expression of support from councillor Bowden and the promise of engagement with Fenland over this and to the pointer about Cambridge, which I'm sure our officers will look into. I don't think I've ever schmoozed anyone in my life, I thought this was about basic justice and decency, but then there you go. Service access, yes councillor Hoy, you are right that there are some basic services that will remain accessible to people, but they are only the basic ones, and in many cases, people will find services denied to them, not because there is a legal duty to deny people service, but because of the uncertainty and the misinformation that is around, the misunderstandings and, as the case I quoted about the Spanish care worker who was sacked just in case, the fear of government retribution and reprisal for failure to police the new arrangements. I thought that was an incredibly powerful speech from councillor Coxcondron about the individual vulnerabilities of women and children and families, so thank you so much for that, as what I think is a maiden speech. Thank you enormously, and councillor Sanderson as well with his real heart for the committee, the committee we now call COSMIC, that I know means so very much for him, so thank you very much indeed for that. Councillor Count talked about workload, I think one of the things I found really heartening has been the enthusiasm of our officers for their potential to contribute to this agenda, and I found that really very encouraging indeed. And this isn't about virtue signalling or whatever it was that was said, this is a set of concrete actions that we're proposing to undertake, practical steps, as councillor Bulat has said. And just finally, at the end of what, as I say, has been a very heartening debate, I wanted to say thank you to councillor Bulat for talking about that them and us, and there is no them and us, there needs to be empathy. We need to recognise and respect other people from other cultures, other communities, who have come to our country or whose parents, family have come to our country and made our country what it is and made it all the better for that. That benefit of immigration, of people coming in, of bringing their skills, their knowledge, their different experiences to us, is such a profoundly enriching thing, and I am enriched by the people that I know, including people in this chamber, who have come to this country and made their mark here and lived their lives here and done their thing here. That is a tremendously enriching thing, not just for them but for all of us, and I'm grateful to them for it. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to the vote, I gather. I will pass the vote of all those in favour. They... Whoops, against? That was unanimous, again. I wonder whether we continued on with that? Okay, thank you for that, that is passed.
Officers have indicated it might be a good point for lunch.
What? Officers, as you've just heard, have indicated that they're hungry. We've got two more motions to hear. I'm at your wish and command. All those in favour, let's have a vote. All those in favour of a lunch break of, say, three-quarters of an hour? No, three-quarters of an hour? I've got to look. Of half an hour then? Please show those against... All those that want a lunch break? All those against the lunch break? Let's go for it. Councillor Turney.
Yes, Chairman?
I believe you've got motion number D?
Yes, I have.
Yep? What? Yes.
Yes, so I would like to propose this motion, and I believe councillor Hoy is going to second it.
Do you want to introduce it?
Absolutely, I do. I thought there was an amendment, but...
There is an amendment?
Okay, thank you. Sometimes I forget the exact procedure, so I apologise. Yes, thank you so much for taking the time to read the motion. I've done my best in preparing this motion to phrase it in such a way that we would try and strip the worst of the politics out of it, because I just think we just get ourselves tied in knots with that. So I hope you will see, I know you've all read it, and I hope you will see that I've tried to accept that we all have a culpability for the state of our highways, all parties, consistent, including my own, and previous councils, including my own, and I've also tried to accept that there are good reasons why those decisions have been taken, so I'm not trying to cast blame on anyone. But I know that a lot of members in this room stood on an election of how they were going to improve the highways. And what I'm trying to do with this motion is to just get a general agreement that this cannot continue. Now, when I talk to my residents, perhaps they're different at our end of the county to the other end, but when I talk to my residents, they don't all rush up to me and tell me I must immediately solve the climate emergency. I'm sure many of them absolutely understand and believe that, but they don't all rush up and tell me. What they do all rush up and tell me is, for goodness sake, what do we pay our council tax for? Our highways are disastrous. And it's fair, it's a fair comment, because we have, time and time again, knocked the ball down the road and not spent enough on highways. And it's simply not good enough to just keep on knocking that ball further down the road. Now, I've tried to couch this motion in such a way that it will appeal to everyone in this room, I've tried to note the disparages in outcomes for health and wealth across the county, and tried to build the motion around the idea that we can address some of that by some fairly simple actions. I absolutely knew it was going to be amended, I accept it's going to be amended, but I just wish the amendment wasn't what it is, which is negating, and I do so propose my motion.
Thank you very much for that. You do have a second, I believe?
Yeah, second and reverse.
We do have an amendment from councillor Netzinger. Do you want to present that amendment, please?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to propose my amendment. I believe I have a second, and I would like to reserve my right to speak, please.
Okay, and your second is? Councillor... Whoops, councillor Burke, thank you.
And I reserve...
Shall we open it up for debate, councillor?
I reserve my right as well, sorry.
Chair, point of order. Can I just ask if that's correct? Because I know that a second, I don't know the answer, I'm asking the monitoring officer through you. I know that a second can reserve the right to speak, but normally you have an introduction to a motion or amendment, so I'm just asking if that's appropriate.
In that case, Chair, I'm perfectly happy to speak now, that's fine. I'm very happy to speak now.
I share councillor Count's concern, I'm not comfortable with that procedure.
That's fine.
So yes, go for it.
Thank you. I'm very grateful that councillor Tierney has recognised the very difficult position that the new joint administration has been placed in by the Conservative government's decision to reduce funding to our highways budget. That reduction was £7.3 million across Cambridgeshire and Peterborough. I think it's important to add that this funding reduction comes on top of an extremely difficult financial legacy left by the decisions of his group over recent years. The budget decisions made by councillor Tierney's group and voted for by councillor Tierney have left Cambridge County Council with an unfunded budget gap of £22 million next year, and this is against a backdrop of extreme financial pressure. So against this backdrop, there are difficult decisions to be made about how we can best support our most deprived communities. Like councillor Tierney, the joint administration is very well aware of which communities suffer from deprivation. We have made strong commitments to tackle the health and educational inequalities, which mean that those in our poorest communities have a life expectancy of almost 10 years less than those in the wealthiest parts of the country. However, it is my view that highways maintenance is not the key to tackling this inequality. Many of those on the lowest incomes do not have a private car. Increasing access to other forms of transport is just as important as improving the opportunity to fill potholes, and that is why I ask you to support this amendment. We must ensure that those on the lowest incomes right across the county are able to access health and education and that they can get about safely by a range of transport types, rather than transport only being available to those who can afford driving lessons or car insurance. So I ask you to support our amendment with its emphasis not only on improving our highways, which I agree with councillor Tierney, are in a disastrous state, but also to improving other forms of transport, particularly public transport, which is, I think, really crucial for many of our most deprived communities. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Tierney, would you accept the amended version of your motion?
No, Chairman, I won't. It strips out everything of value from the original motion, it's utterly useless.
Okay, right, we'll open it up for debate then. Anybody wish to speak for or against?
Councillor Corney, I think it is, I'm very sorry.
Yes, councillor Corney?
No, sorry, I can't tell from... I do apologise.
No, that would be King. Thank you.
Sorry, I apologise for that. Yes, you are here.
Thank you, Chair. So for quite some time there has been an equality and an issue with how our roads and highways, particularly paths, are prioritised for repair. I represent both Huntingdon North and East, both areas considerably left behind in terms of the prioritise for the maintenance, particularly with the pathways. Only recently, a 65-year-old lady broke two bones in her foot when she fell due to the state of disrepair of the pathways in Huntingdon East. And likewise in North and East, I've got disabled and elderly residents that can't leave their front doors due to the state of the pavements outside them, so it's affecting the quality of life and is also dangerous. So I really liked the motion unamended by councillor Tierney, I thought it addressed three really crucial questions that my residents have, and that's what this council can do to address that problem, how and when. Unfortunately though, the Lib Dem administration's proposed amendment to this motion strips out all of the accountability from the motion, including the deadlines on page two, which were loose deadlines at that, to be honest. And on page one is a very wishy-washy statement there, saying that, and I quote, "The new joint administration has made long-term commitment to seek to maintain or increase spending." Which is it, increase, maintain, or if you're only going to seek, does that mean we can end up with less? Again, it's wishy-washy, it's a lack of commitment, and more inaction, which is all we seem to be seeing from this Lib Dem administration, more inaction, less commitment, and now a pay rise to go with it as well. So I don't support this amendment, and I don't think anyone should. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other speakers? Councillor Count.
Thank you, Chair. More along the same lines, I mean, let's look at the pact that the three amigos have signed up to under the Liberal Democrat administration. They've actually signed up to, "We will seek to invest more in road, footway and cycle path maintenance." So that one's fallen by the wayside, hasn't it? It's your words, not mine, because whilst you have agreed to seek to invest more in that, councillor Netzinger has just said that that's not the right answer, that's not her preference, she's looking at the bus services. But the second point is, "All spending decisions will be assessed for the impact on residents living in deprivation." Now, I've got a fair idea that that probably was put forward by the Labour Group, because it's close to the heart, they don't do gesture politics, you know where you stand with the Labour Group, and it's always along these lines, and I admire them for that. But of course that one just got thrown in the wind and under a bus by this amendment to this motion. So there we are, your pact is falling to pieces, because the moment that something's put in front of you that actually adheres to your pact, here we are, having a very, very sensible motion from councillor Tierney, "Let's do what the pact asks, let's put more in highway spending," you turn that down, "And let's allocate it towards areas of deprivation," you turn that down, so actually your pact doesn't seem to be written, worth the paper it's written on. So how serious are you about any of this, at all? There is a shortfall in funding, roughly equivalent to the £6.3 million underspend the Conservative administration delivered, that you've squirreled away into reserves. And we've heard from councillor Hewitt earlier, "Well, you know, this is the minimum amount of reserves necessary that you've left us with." Well, actually it's the same amount of reserves that we've run for the last 11 or 12 years, 3% of the overall budget. So I don't think that you need to increase your reserves, I think you actually need to put that reserve money, you've got sitting festering in a bank account, into actual path maintenance, cycleway maintenance and roads maintenance. But you've decided not to. In fact, it's not just £6.3 million, you've put another £7.8 million into earmarked reserves at the same meeting. You've put £14 or £15 million off to sit in a bank account rather than deal with an immediate problem. And don't say, "We're going to have a look at this in September," because by the time September comes and you put it through a committee, you're in the winter months. Winter months is when you're forced into doing potholes, you don't do the preventative work, so you're actually throwing away money if you decide later on to do a U-turn and actually do something that you printed on your leaflet saying you'll actually invest more in money. So we've had a sensible motion, this amendment does nothing whatsoever about it, it's actually at odds with all of your claimed aspirations. So your new amendments, just set up a talking shop, and then the one vital bit is you're going to repair the roads according to the officer's definition of need. So despite the fact that you're going to agree to this audit report on deprivation, you're not actually going to repair the roads that way, you're going to actually hand that, just like everything else you're handing over, to the officers to run in the background and repair roads according to officer's definition of need. Your words, your amendment, not mine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Bowden.
Thank you, Chair. Much of politics is about prioritisation, and I've been increasingly concerned, and this amendment makes me more concerned, that we are seeing inappropriate prioritisation from the, sorry, from the administration, I was going to say Liberal Democrat, and I do apologise, it's so easy, if it walks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, it's easy to call it a duck, but I appreciate it's an administration, not a Lib Dem administration, so my apologies for the slip. I do worry about the prioritisation, because as councillor Count made clear, you even made reference in your joint statement at the beginning of the... made reference in your joint statement at the beginning of the administration about the need to have prioritisation towards those areas of greatest deprivation. I'm not speaking on behalf of my division here. None of my division's lower super output areas are listed in this motion, so I'm not speaking for my division. But I'm speaking from the point of view of the county, and surely, we've had motions before in front of this council where we've agreed that we need to close the gap between the richest and poorest parts of our county. And that's not a gap between North and South, it's a gap between those individual areas, some of which are in Cambridge City, which are among the poorest in the county, and those which are among the richest. And we saw in the Health Committee, Adults and Health Committee, that we are not going to have the level of prioritisation towards those areas of greatest need, and now we're seeing it, so far as highways is concerned. And I find it very depressing, because what we have in front of us here is nothing but a wrecking amendment. It wrecks the original motion. Because the original motion calls for a prioritisation of spending on roads in our most deprived areas. But what this amendment does is to weaken that significantly, and it merely prioritises an audit of roads in our most deprived areas. And I really find that very sad. I'd like to give you some notice, Chair, because I'd be really interested to see which members of this council, especially those representing parts of St Neet, St Huntingdon, I'd be interested to see which members actually vote in favour of this amendment, and therefore vote against prioritising spending in their own towns. I will be asking for a recorded vote when it comes to the appropriate time on the amendment. Thank you.
Chairman, only councillor Bird, who reserved her right to second.
Councillor Bird?
Thank you, Chair. Very interesting what was coming from the other side of the room. How many years was the county council under Conservatives? Oh dear, I can't remember that. What did you do to the pavements and the roads? Nothing. In Cambridge especially, all the roads are terrible. And I understand what the gentleman across there, I'm sorry, is it councillor King, said about the disabled and elderly not able to get out because of the roads are so bad and the pavements. This isn't fair on our residents of the county. And it saddens me that I'm having to sit here and argue the point. Yes, the money's not good. Everywhere is the same problem. We don't have the funding, and because of the Conservative government, again. If the Conservative government would put a bit more money in, we'd all live happy lives. Well, we'd hope to. I've been thrown out of my wheelchair because of a pothole, and it's not very nice, embarrassing as well. Important too, that then families have got to be able to afford a bike. Not a lot of families have got that sort of money. They're on benefits. They have to pick either food or pay their rent. That's another important thing. So with this amendment, I understand we have to do it, and I know, I'm hoping all my colleagues are agreeing with me, but I will fight to get community transport for all the villages, because that's what I want, so the elderly and disabled can get out. And also, I've been asking about a taxi card scheme like we have in the city, which would work really well. So that would cut down the cost if an elderly or disabled wanted to go to shop, Tesco's, wherever, they could get discount on their taxi journey. And I think that's something we need to look at. We've only been in power for under three months. You had four years. Watch this space, that's all I can say. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for that.
Councillor Tierney to sum up. Thank you, Jim.
Councillor Tierney?
Thank you, Chairman, Chair. Thank you, everyone, for your contributions. Particularly, thank you to councillor Bird, who I agree with. I agree with what councillor Bird said, and in fact, councillor Bird clearly agrees with what my motion says. Those areas of deprivation are included on my list. King's Hedges is right there on it. I'm fighting for what those people in those divisions should also be fighting for, which is fair funding for areas of deprivation. Because it's not right. It's not right that this funding is getting channelled either nowhere or towards areas which are doing just fine, and those areas are being left behind. I knew that there will be an amendment to this, and I hoped the amendment would be to give them a little more time or something, but what the amendment actually does is what we're so famous for: nothing. Nothing. The amendment, you correctly said, councillor Bird correctly said, the Conservatives were in power for four years, and before that, another sort of joint administration. And you're right, there have been failures between those successive councils. My motion accepted that. And you're right that you've only been in charge for three months. Unfortunately, you're now setting with this motion the future. So watch this space. I don't need to watch it. This amendment tells me everything I need to know. What you seek to do is to pre-allocate and avoid. I mean, people are looking now. You've championed this, "We're going to make it all equal, we're going to share the wealth, we're going to fix all these problems." And now they're just going to look at you and say, "Here comes the new boss, same as the old boss." You know, I'm just really depressed by this. Please, in future, at least think about, when you do an amendment, delivering something that actually goes some way towards what the original motion said. This does nothing. I won't be voting for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We now come to the vote. You've indicated that you want a recorded vote. I think we need 14 hands up. 14 hands go up, it will be a recorded vote.
Chair, thank you. Again, I'll call your name out, and obviously, for, against, abstain, please. Ambrose Smith. Atkins.
For.
Bachelor.
For.
Beckett.
For.
Billington.
Against.
Bird.
For.
Bowden.
Against.
Bradnam.
Can I just check? We are voting on the amendment.
The amendment, yes.
For, thank you.
Bulat.
For.
Bywater. Connor.
Against.
Corny.
Against.
Costello.
Against.
Count. Coates.
For.
Coxcondron. Criswell.
Against.
Daunton.
For.
Dew.
Against.
Depray.
For.
Ferguson.
For.
French.
Against.
Fuller.
Against.
Gardner.
Against.
Gay.
For.
Giles.
For.
Goldsack.
Against.
Goodliff.
For.
Gough. Gowing.
Against.
Hathorn.
For.
Hay.
Against.
Howe.
Against.
Howitt.
For.
Hoy.
Against.
Kindersley.
For.
Jonas King.
Against.
Maria King.
For.
Simon King.
Against.
Maguire.
Against.
Miskini.
For.
Mills.
For.
Murphy.
For.
Netzinger.
For.
Prentis.
Against.
Ray.
For.
Reynolds.
Against.
Sanderson.
For.
Dan Schuman.
Against.
Josh Schuman.
Against.
Shayla.
For.
Sharp.
Against.
Slatter.
For.
Taylor. Thompson.
For.
Tierney.
Against.
Van de Ven.
For.
Wieland.
For.
Wilson.
For.
Chairman, the result of the vote is 32, sorry, 32 votes in favour, 27 against, and no abstentions. The amendment, sorry, I've unread that.
Thank you very much for that.
Sorry, hang on, can I just clarify? The amendment is therefore carried. Apologies.
Yeah, so the amended proposal by councillor Netzinger, excuse me, is now the substantive motion, so we put that to the vote. Anybody want to speak for or against it? Councillor Count?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just going to pick up on a few of the points that were raised, and hopefully I can help with them. Earlier on in this debate, or perhaps an earlier debate, it was pointed out that some of the financial legacy is because the Conservatives didn't pass the full rate of council tax and adult social care. That was raised by a Liberal Democrat, and they didn't last year, but then again, it was election year, so just thought you might like that piece of information. I was amused by the comment by one of the councillors saying, "We have to do this," because I wasn't quite sure if she was speaking to the point she'd made, or actually the imposition of the whip, when clearly it's at odds with the pact that's imposed and the areas being represented, the Cambridge ones that are in there. And I just want to talk about that list. That list wasn't generated by Conservatives, that wasn't us picking and choosing where it was going to be. Those are called lower super output areas. Those are the names of the lower super output areas. If you look at the atlas, well, actually, ask officers to help you to look for where you can seek out all this information. They are listed in order from the most affluent to the most deprived across multiple deprivations, and those are the areas that are most deprived across Cambridgeshire. And it might surprise some of you, knowing Cambridge City as well as some of you do, and maybe not knowing the rest of the area, just how many of those multiple areas of multiple deprivation, in fact, the most deprived areas, are not in Cambridge City at all. They're actually spread around the county with a large concentration up in Fenland. What's also surprising is, is you look at us as Conservatives, and you label us, and you think of us in some particular way. Well, my area is an area on that list, part of my area, an area of high multiple deprivation. But the people vote for us, not because of our colour, but because of the work we do in our area, to try and solve issues like this with however much money we've got. And you asked what we did over the last four years. Well, the Liberal Democrats have always tried to paint a picture as if the Conservatives have been in charge for eight years, and that's simply not true. The reason they do that is, when it was under no overall control for four years, they lost the vast majority of votes that they put forward, simply because they were unpopular and didn't get enough support. Whereas the Conservatives was often supported by the Labour Party or other groups and got through. So it's actually resentment to say that it was there for eight years. It was no overall control over four years ago. It was no overall control. There was no pacts, there was no joint at the hit partnerships, there was nothing like that. The chairs went according to political proportionality, and we all agreed with them, and we did the best we could to go along for four years. There was no pacts informal or informal. So the Conservatives have been in charge for four years, that's acknowledged, and we're asked what we did in those. Well, in each and every one of those four years, the Conservatives put more into the highways maintenance budget through amendments than the opposition parties. And at the last budget meeting, councillor Netzinger said, "That's not true, we put in more." If she reissues that claim, I'll ask for proof, or I will report that, because it's simply a fact, the Conservatives put forward more into the highways budget than anyone else, when you all had the same opportunities as us. We did have a little anecdote about what is actually being achieved by these amendments, and actually, nothing at all is being achieved by these amendments. So the regime has changed. It's gone from the Conservative Party to the, what I call it, new Liberal Democrat administration. I won't make the apologies for that. The reason I call it, it's pretty much along the lines of Chris Bowden, it's the party of relevance. As far as I can see, the supporting acts are not really there, except for just to prop up the main administration. So as I say, so what we've got is out with the old, in with the new. It's Animal Farm. That's what it is. Four legs good, two legs bad. That's all it is, and we know where we are now. The moment you've got in control, it's going to be two legs even better, isn't it? So thank you very much, but this watered-down amendment does nothing the same as the watered-down one from earlier. You haven't hit the ground running. In fact, you've been a hive of chaos and inactivity. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that interesting statement.
Councillor Hoy, Chair.
Councillor Hoy.
Yes, thank you. So we've heard today that there is a 6 million pound underspend, and you have chosen to put that in your savings, along with other money. There is money available, which you have made real decisions at the last resources meeting and again today, to put money into your savings, when you could have put money into our roads and footpaths, including for the disabled, like has been mentioned, that could have been made with a decision today, and you refused to make that decision. Now, I very, very much hope you forgive the crass saying I'm about to say, but you can't polish a turd, okay? You cannot. There's no point trying to say, "We're going to put all these cycleways on roads that are falling to pieces." Just because you're on a bike doesn't make a pothole any less severe than if you're on a car. So just to say, "We're going to have a look at all these cycleways," how is that going to make any difference? It's the same with buses. It's maybe a pipe dream to think we want to have hundreds of buses busing around the county. They have to drive on roads, they don't fly. We're not in some strange new universe here. They have to drive on roads, so the roads have to be suitable. Councillor Netzinger was saying about cars and how they're an expensive thing people can't afford, and it kind of made that, made me laugh a little bit, because I was thinking, no one ever seems, when they make these statements, they don't seem to see where their statement is and where it's going, and, you know, about all the green agenda, and they've already been told how expensive that's going to be, and they do not think that'll make car use even more expensive, and they're not surprised in five years' time that that happens, without thinking about it now. And I also feel like, once again, the administration doesn't know what it's like to live in a deprived area. In Cambridge, maybe you can cycle because your roads are good, but ours are not good. We do not have good roads to cycle on. Car, we do need our cars. I think what makes me most angry as well is when I drove to, obviously driven to the sports hall in Cambridge twice now, for Strategy and Resources and for children and young people, and when I drove in, I was thinking to myself, "Wow, these roads are great." As soon as I got out of past the A10, the road seemed to magically improve, and I just thought, "How is it that we say there's no money for highways, but there always seems to be money for cycle paths in the city, or a new bridge over the A14 or footways? There's always some more money when they need it in Cambridge, but that we do not ever have money in the fens." Now, the poorest people in our county have to drive to work on the roads that are littered and littered and littered with potholes, and when their tyres get damaged, that is very expensive to replace a tyre. That costs a lot of money. People don't have, you know, you're mentioning about deciding whether to eat and what to do. How are you then going to afford 70 or 80 pounds for a new tyre? It's not that simple. And I'm actually not even saddest with the Lib Dems, because I didn't expect it. They've always been dreamers, but I'm really sad with the Labour members here, because you clearly are no longer friends of the working class, and I don't think you've been for a long time. The point councillor Count made about the amendments leaving it to officers aside was a good one. We've got that now. You've just basically opted for the status quo, and every time I report things, I'm told, "There isn't enough money, it doesn't meet intervention levels, it's not that bad." Councillor Bird was talking about wheelchair users. I absolutely agree with her. I have residents contact me all the time about people using mobility scooters and falling over on potholes, and I report them, and I'm told, "Oh, sorry, they don't meet current intervention levels, there's nothing we can do." And imagine telling that to a lady who's just hurt herself and is absolutely devastated, and has had to pay for a new tyre. "Oh, I'm sorry, but the officers are saying it doesn't meet intervention levels." It just feels to me, this argument is like the fair and funding one all over again, because it's very, very easy to virtue signal and say you care about poor people, but you had a chance to make a real change today, and you didn't take it. The worst thing that you've now done is you've watered this down, you've taken away any time deadline, you've taken away any money, and it's absolutely worthless. Any of you who voted to accept that motion, and if you represent Huntingdon North, Eton Sochan, Abbey, King's Hedges, you should be ashamed today. You had a real chance to deliver something for those communities, and you voted against that, you got your own amendment in, and you voted against millions of pounds of funding, and it's absolutely disgusting. You stuck to your whip and let your areas down, and you should be ashamed of it.
Thank you.
Councillor Miskini, Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much. I will take all the comments that have been made throughout this meeting about, you know, people knowing what the Labour Party should do or should stand for. I'll take that in good spirit, you know, and I hope you will take my own in good spirit when it comes. I hope I'm not sounding a bit like deja vu when I'm about to say I wasn't going to speak, but I am going to speak, because quite frankly, you know, I know what it's like to represent my division, and I'm not going to take any lessons from anybody about representing King's Hedges. Hedges, Kings Hedges is on that list. I've been a councillor there for four years and a bit. I have laboured, pun intended, I have crammed every little bit of resource I could find to put a little bit of filling into those potholes, to replace some of those street lights that your administration took out. And a lot of the times, you don't have to, or you shouldn't have to, apply for additional funding to fill a pothole. These repairs should be done centrally by the department, which has been running in a ridiculously awful state for four years, and these repairs aren't done as part of the normal cycle, as they should do. So the idea right now that we should be voting for a motion to put money into street repairs according to deprivation is a joke, considering what's been going on over the past four years. Yes, deprived areas of the county do need extra funding, they do need extra money. But when you speak to residents in my division, quite apart from the whole wiring you fix in these potholes, what they also tell me is that we can't get into the city centre, we can't get to work, we can't get to where we need to commute to, because we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the buses, we don't have the roads, and the roads are awful in the city centre, where the rich people live. The roads are awful in the city centre, and we're all using them, and we're all using them, and we should be repairing them, which is exactly what we're going to do. And Market, and Romsey, and Petersfield are not on this list. Does that mean the poor people don't go there? They do, because they have to, and we should look after them. As they go to Petersfield, as they stay home in Kings Hedges, as they stay home in Fenland. And the last thing I'm going to say is that, quite frankly, I hope that those Conservative members left in South Cambs will go and talk to their MP, Mr Anthony Brown, who is helping, championing the working classes by denying them the infrastructure that they need to get to work. Can we please back the buses that will go on decent roads, when we're being offered the opportunity to build them, and not pretend that these projects aren't necessary? Because quite frankly, you're making a mockery out of this. And please, 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 let me speak for the Labour Party, you don't need to, thank you.
Right, thank you for that. Now, we have four more speakers, I've drawn the line at that, we'll have those four speakers. I would ask you to keep it brief and not repeat what other people have said, if that's possible.
Councillor Howard.
Councillor Howard.
Thank you, I'm happy to keep it brief. The Conservatives say that they care about need, but 15 of the 22 schemes they want as prioritised happen to be represented by Conservative county councillors. And I don't think they should mislead the public by suggesting that that's their true motivation. If it was their true motivation, as the leader of the council said in her introduction...
Chair, point of order, point of personal explanation.
I didn't refer to any particular member...
No, no, councillor Howard.
No, but I wish to refer to a point I said earlier in today, which is point of personal explanation. I don't want there to be any misunderstanding here, but the list, which I referred to earlier, I did state that those are lower super output areas, and they are driven by an actual database that is accessible to anyone, and those are the most deprived on there. So it's very clear that these aren't Conservative, Labour or Liberal, they are the most deprived areas. The fact that the majority of them are Conservatives, obviously jars us a sound note with councillor Hewitt, but these are the most deprived areas.
That's a good explanation, and I'm somewhat surprised to see Eton Soken in there, but let's move on, councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. Fifteen of 22 schemes they put forward are for Conservative-controlled areas, I don't blame them for pushing forward their own areas, I do blame them for trying to pretend that they're worried and their motivation is about inequality. It is quite clear in Cambridgeshire that there are high levels of absolute poverty in districts like Fenland, but there are high levels of poverty across many of the communities in Cambridgeshire that are often hidden by the relative inequality bringing up the average, but not bringing up the people who are affected in Cambridge and in other communities. And if the member from Fenland is really concerned about poverty, what about the 20% of the residents of Fenland who don't have a car? And those 20,000-plus people are the people who most live in poverty and in deprivation. And if you are truly worried about tackling poverty, and not simply political point-scoring, you will take the points made by the leader of the council, when she said it is other measures that will be more successful in tackling poverty, and those other measures are the ones that we will be supporting as an administration.
Chairman, point of personal information? I think I'm being referred to as the member for Fenland, although there are multiple members for Fenland here. But I would just like to make the point that everything you just said is nonsense, that the motion, my original motion referred to all the other roads after the first set of roads, that even people who don't have cars still use roads, because they use taxis and buses and bikes and walking. So please don't talk absolute rubbish, thank you.
Yes, right, okay.
Councillor Bullock.
Let's move on.
Councillor Bullock.
Councillor Bullock.
Thank you, Chair.
And if you can speak a little bit slower and nearer the microphone, that would be much appreciated.
Thank you, Chair, I'll be very brief on this point, because I'd like to speak as the member for Abbey Division, which of course is listed in the motion list of the areas of greatest deprivation. Of course, the picture is much more complex than city and out of city, as it has been pointed out previously, and Abbey, as you probably are all aware, is the most deprived division in Cambridge City, and of course, one of the most deprived across the county. I just really want to make a simple point why I supported the amended motion, is on point A, it's not an either-or for me, it's an and, it's saying roads and footpaths and cycle paths. And when I speak to residents in Abbey, and of course, highways issues and cycling issues are probably the number one issue on the doorstep, and the number one issues in the casework, people do care equally about fixing areas like Iken Road, which are in a terrible state, and fixing the Barnwell Road cycle path, for example. So for me, it's not an either-or, it's actually prioritising different means of transport in the most deprived areas. That's why I support this amended motion, because it actually makes a more comprehensive picture of actually supporting people who cycle as well, or who don't drive, and I say this as someone who is a regular user of the number three bus, but don't get me started by the number three bus in Cambridge, so I'll just stop there and thank you for that.
Thank you. Councillor Atkins, please.
Thank you, Chair, this may be a little unstructured, as I didn't plan to speak, but unfortunately, my patience has somewhat snapped. In the administration, we all know it's a coalition, the coalition has been attacked several times, it's chaotic, made up of several parties. Frankly, it's one of our greatest strengths as this administration. This administration represents a huge diverse range of areas, some of the richest, some of the poorest, rural, urban, young, old, and I want to reassure the council that we take account of all that expertise, all that local knowledge, and it will inform our strategy for all areas of spending across the council. To seek to divide us as representing some smaller part of the county, or perhaps lacking some understanding, is, I think, not a fair reflection of the expertise that we have assembled as part of this administration, and is well represented on its committees. I have also heard the comment recently, that there is some resentment perhaps of funding for busways and cycleways in Cambridge. Yet unless I'm much mistaken, it was not, well, perhaps it was three or four hours ago now, that a Conservative member was taking credit for securing that funding from central government. So surely they understand that that money has not been taken away from other areas, and has not come directly from the council's budget, but has been successfully applied for as a grant from central government. So I don't accept the argument that the activity around Cambridge and its connection to the surrounding areas, which by the way, will be of great benefit to those on lower incomes who need to commute into Cambridge, that that disadvantages other areas of the county is totally facetious. I would like to thank the mover of the original motion for providing this list and giving it such prominence, this list of areas of high deprivation. We will study this list, it will be important for us in deciding, or a very similar list, will I'm sure be used in deciding outcomes and investment in health, education, economic development. But I don't feel that the original moves of this motion, or members of the opposition, have proved a link solely to car transport, that seems to me to be unnecessarily restrictive. You can damage your car in a pothole in any part of the county, we all move through various bits of the county, we all walk on lots of roads in different places, it's not like we employ people in the particular village to fix the pothole in that village. So I don't particularly see this link to deprivation as having been proved. There is one area in which I think you could make a case that deprivation would affect transport and highways, and that might be that people in less deprived areas are perhaps better at getting the council's attention for investment in those areas, and that I think is perhaps a phenomenon that we would all recognise. And therefore, I welcome that there will be a prioritised audit that will seek perhaps to gather up any areas that might have been overlooked, because residents perhaps feel less able to contact or less connected to their council, and I think that is not, as some opposition members have stated, worthless, I think that is a very worthwhile exercise, and will help inform a sensible road strategy that I'm sure this administration will pursue. Thank you.
Thank you. And Judge Tierney.
Thank you, Chairman. I saw a meme the other day, I'm sure most of you know what a meme is, but kind of a cartoon picture of humour, and it had in it a big pothole in the middle of the road with three cars in it, and then a cycleway winding its way around the hole, and some workmen working on that new cycleway. And humour comes from somewhere, doesn't it? It comes from people recognising a feature and then exaggerating it. And I think we need to all bear in mind that the people of the county, everywhere you go, in every one of our divisions, is looking at our highways and saying, 'What are we paying our council tax for?'. Now, we can score political points off each other all day, a lot of the points that the opposition over there have been making have been basically supporting my original motion, not the amendment that does nothing, but that's fine. All I just think you should do is stick to your guns and let's actually put some more money into highways, not three years' time, not nine years' time, not after 47 committee meetings, let's do it straight away, so that the people can actually be proud of their roads again. Would that be good, do you think? Thank you, Chairman, I have finished.
Thank you. Right, I propose to put this to the vote now. The vote is for the amendment, the amended, sorry, the amended motion. All those in favour, please show. Against, one, two, any abstentions? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, I think I made that eight. Okay, that is carried. Thank you. We now move on to the final motion by councillor Count, would you like to present that to the council, please?
Thank you, Chair, I'll introduce it, and I understand that councillor Schuman will be my second. I put forward a very simple motion, I don't agree with many of the decisions the administration has made, but I recognise the right you have to make them as you have the majority. It's a shame therefore that the start of your term of administration has stretched the credibility of legal limit in this way. Not to mince words, you fiddled with the constitution at the AGM, setting up new committees under an urgent decision notice. If, that is unsound, and there's the word if, any decision they now make, if the original setup fails, all those decisions are at risk. You've received some legal balance and some legal advice, and actually, the legal advice was secondary legal advice, it was the second person we went to, because it was finally balanced, and you were seeing that that note was revised, from 'this is good to go, you don't need to revisit any decisions', to 'on balance, this is good to go, you don't need to revisit any of those decisions'. And we took the view not to ask you to revisit any decisions, because of the sheer weight of everything involved, but simply ratifying them today will actually make them all solid, not a problem in quite a later date. So I just want to talk to you a little bit about what on balance means, for those that you haven't had the opportunities to be much in contact with lawyers, go to court, barristers, et cetera. The legal advice, on balance, you are okay? Well, I'll tell you what on balance means, it means that there's a good chance you're going to win, and there's a smaller chance you're going to lose, all right? That's the nature of courts. No lawyer will ever say to you, 'Go to court and I'm going to guarantee you win', they might do in a one in a million cases, but generally speaking, you take your day of risk in court. And on balance is a weak opinion, it means, in my view, perhaps let's argue 60/40, six times out of 10, you will go to court and win, because you've got a fair judge, a fair barrister, and a fair win behind you. And four times out of 10, you will lose, because the other side's got a clever barrister and the judge is in a bad mood. That's what on balance means. Nobody's saying to you that the decision was so sound, you don't have to risk worry about it whatsoever. Well, you've got responsibility here at the county council, and let me just describe what that responsibility is, and the risk you are taking, should you decide not to ratify these decisions. The county council, as you know, has a budget around £750-odd million, it awards contracts in the millions, the tens of millions, even multiple tens of millions, very large contracts. You also have responsibility as a corporate parent barrister, so you want to be as safe as possible. So I'm not asking you to revisit all your decisions, all I'm asking you to do is ratify them. Basically, as far as I'm concerned, we have given you a get-out-of-jail-free card. We haven't asked you to revisit any decisions, simply to ratify them, pass this motion, and all of a sudden, those decisions made in haste are no longer at risk. It's up to you, really. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any, yes, you've got a second, have you? Yes, and he wants to reserve the right to speak, don't you?
I'll reserve my rights, Mr Chair.
Okay, so let's open this up to debate.
Councillor Necksinger.
Councillor Necksinger.
Thank you. I would like to respond to what councillor Count says about the legal advice on this matter. The legal, we have, as he says, has two sets of legal advice on this, and that legal advice is clear, that that decision that was made in May is a valid decision, it was a decision which is supported. There is no need for this decision to be re-looked at, there is no need for any future ratification. I'd just like to say that the words that he came up with in terms of legal advice, I don't, that's not what I recognise from the legal advice that we've seen. I think it was unusually clear that this was not a tight decision, it was very, and that's the advice that has been part of the briefing note that was sent out to the council. The council have seen that briefing note, they can see that the advice is that this motion is not necessary. The council made a clear decision on its own internal working, on the way it would work in May, that decision is legal, we should stick with it, and I ask you to vote down this motion. Thank you.
Chair, can I come in on a point of order? I wanted to give...
What point of order?
Point of order, councillor Necksinger, the opportunity to finish before that. Councillor Necksinger just said on the legal advice she's seen, all right, 'I have been denied access to the legal advice', categorically been denied access to the legal advice that was given, so the only legal advice that I have seen...
What point of order is this?
The only legal advice I have seen are the ones in the briefing note, including the words 'on balance'.
Could I ask what point of order this is on?
So I'd like to inquire about that, please.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Can I ask which point of order this is?
Well, I've already answered, and I'm struggling to get what the point of order is.
So this is the...
Is it the lack of information you've been given? Well, what point of order does that come on?
This is the appropriate running of the actions of a council, if one party has been given to access to information and the scrutinising party hasn't. So has councillor Necksinger seen the legal advice that I have been...
That is not a point of order.
Are you prepared to carry on with this debate with that information?
Right, all I'm saying is, what you called a point of order was not a point of order. It was a point of lack of information, which I think could be dealt with at another time. Councillor Necksinger, you were mentioned, did you want to respond to that? No?
Councillor Hough.
Councillor Hough.
Yeah, so we're now being told that there's legal advice that we haven't seen, we haven't had access to, we're not allowed access to. Councillor Necksinger was asked about it, he quickly tried to silence councillor Count about it, because obviously, I'm presuming you're quite embarrassed that you don't want us to see that. He said it was irrelevant, I don't see how legal advice is irrelevant, it's very relevant. And it just smacks to me of just trying to hide things and being not particularly helpful. So I think you should tell us what the legal advice is now, so we can make a fair, informed decision.
I'm just going to have a very, very brief adjournment here, while I have a word with my legal colleague. Yes, apparently this non-existent advice or whatever is not for being dealt with here, I'm confused as you are, but this is the advice I've been given.
Can I make a point of personal explanation, please, Chair? I would just like to make it clear that it is entirely normal for legal advice to be available to the administration, that is not available to all members of the council, you know that this is the case because the Farmgate report and the legal advice surrounding the Farmgate report has been seen by some members of the council and not others, this is not unusual in any way.
Chair, point of order, I'd like to raise a point of order under rule 11K, 11K to ask to adjourn a debate, I ask that this debate be adjourned, I also make a formal complaint that the administration has been given access to legal advice on this point which I have specifically asked for and been denied and told no members can have it, all right, this is unacceptable, I've never known a case like this and the Farmgates, the Mazars report that you raised was shared with the audit committee which had members of all parties, so this is not a precedent at all, I formally propose that this debate be adjourned and I wish that you take that and put it, I asked for a seconder and put that to a vote.
Happy to second that, Chairman.
Right, we have a proposal that the debate is adjourned, which I believe we can do. Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, right, we will go to the vote on this to see whether the debate is deferred or not, or delayed.
Chair, can I ask that we have a recorded vote on this, please?
14 hands, yes, 14 hands. We will put this to the vote, whether the debate is adjourned.
Can I just ask, before we have that vote, could we have an adjournment of the meeting for five minutes while I just establish whether-
Chairman, a point of order, there's been a proposal, it's been seconded and we now move to the vote, we need no further discussion from councillor Nettinger or anybody else.
There is, I believe that councillor Nettinger has put an amendment in.
No, no, I haven't got to put an amendment, I've just, I have simply asked for an adjournment of this meeting for five minutes, that's with, I mean you could in fact make it 10 minutes, Chair-
Chairman, a point of order, that is not alongside our code and rules and I'll ask the monitoring officer to once and for all give us some good advice, is it right that you would amend a proposal to adjourn the meeting?
I haven't asked for an amendment, I've asked for an adjournment.
You'll have to mention me by name, Chair, and otherwise I can't speak, Chairman, I understand the difficulty you're being faced with at the moment, but a proposal has been put by councillor Count, that cannot be superseded by a further proposal being put by councillor Nettinger, they are different proposals, it is not an amendment to councillor Count's proposal, you need to take the proposal from councillor Count's which is to adjourn this matter, not to adjourn the meeting, Chairman, that can come later if you so choose, that is a separate proposal, Chair.
Thank you for those wise words, my predecessor, the vote is a recorded vote, has a recorded vote, councillor Count, what is your proposal that-
Chairman, may I address the meeting, please?
Debate be adjourned.
And I'm happy to second it, Chairman.
The proposal is that the debate, the item under discussion be adjourned.
Chairman, may I address the meeting, please?
Sorry?
May I address the meeting, please?
Chairman, some of us are having difficulty hearing what the monitoring officer is saying.
I would like to clarify what's being discussed here.
Councillor Giles, surely the legal officers should be able to advise us.
Are you chairing?
Right, councillor Count has put on a motion, been seconded, we're recording voting, all those in support of the motion by councillor Count, right, you will be asked.
I will be reading your names out, this is in relation to the debate being adjourned, can you please answer for, against and or abstain? Ambrose Smith.
Against.
Bachelor.
Against.
Beckett.
Against.
Billington.
For.
Bird.
Against, sorry, Brainwin.
Bowden.
For.
Bradnam.
Against.
Boulat.
Against.
Bywater. Connor.
For.
Corny.
For.
Costello.
For.
Count.
For.
Coates.
Against.
Coxcondren. Criswell.
For.
Daunton.
Against.
Dew.
For.
Depray.
Sorry, against.
Ferguson.
Against.
French.
For.
Fuller. Oh, it's not here. Gardner.
For.
Gay.
Against.
Giles. Goldsack.
For.
Goodley.
Against.
Gough. Gowing.
For.
Hathon.
Against.
Hay.
For.
Howe.
For.
Harwatt.
Against.
Hoy. Kindersley.
Against.
Jonas King.
For.
Maria King.
Against.
Simon King.
For.
Maguire.
For.
Muschini.
God save us, against.
Mills.
Against.
Murphy.
Against.
Nettinger.
Against.
Prentice.
For.
Ray.
Against.
Reynolds. It's gone, okay. Sanderson.
Against.
Dan Schuman.
For.
Josh Schuman.
For.
Shayla.
Against.
Sharp.
For.
Slatter.
Against.
Taylor. Thompson.
Against.
Tierney. Tierney.
For.
Vanderven.
Against.
Wieland. motion is therefore lost.
Against.
Thank you very much for that, right, we had that point of order, you wished to-
Wilson.
Against.
Chair, new point of order.
Can we request that the question be now put?
Sorry, is it-
Chair, new point of order, I was the one who stood up, I have the floor, please don't interrupt, it's up to the chair to address me, nobody else stood up, thank you, Chair, new point of order, 12.8 I wish to withdraw the motion and also wish to lodge a formal complaint, but the point is, 12.8, gee, I wish to withdraw the motion.
Chairman, under point of order and 12.8 as seconder, I also withdraw the motion on the basis of weak legal advice and unconstitutional actions which have become apparent to us.
Right, thank you for that, the motion is withdrawn, let's go on to the-
Chairman, the meeting's consent, the meeting's consent must be obtained.
Chairman, you made the announcement and the motion's been withdrawn, you consented it, thank you.
That is not, that is not the conclusion of the business so far, however, as you leave, don't forget to put your mask on. Good riddance to the lot of them, I say. This isn't another sour break, is it? Right, well we'll continue. I think the last agenda item is questions for the Cambridge and Peterborough Combined Authority, the overview scrutiny committee, has there been any questions? Is there any questions?
Chairman, I think if you go through, there will be somebody potentially who wishes to ask a question.
Oh, well, with all that excitement, my goodness.
May I ask my question, Chair?
councillor Bradnam.
Yes? Okay, are you with, I'm on the Cambridgeshire and Peterborough Combined Authority which is Paper 11A and I am looking at an unnumbered page but it refers to the meeting on the 20th of July, I think, let me just check, 30th of June, that's right, and I wanted to ask the leader, was she surprised by the reluctance of the Conservative representatives on the Combined Authority Board, their reluctance to support the recommendations of the Combined Authority Commission on climate change which was debated at that meeting?
Thank you for your question, I was indeed extremely surprised by the unwillingness of members of Conservative councils across Cambridgeshire to support the recommendations of the Climate Commission, there was an attempt at the meeting to try and reduce the number of recommendations to only one, which was an extremely disappointing outcome, I think it's a serious issue that councils across this county were not willing to support the Combined Authority's desire to accept the recommendations of its extremely high-powered and excellent report on climate which was received at that meeting and it was very disappointing that none of the, well, that the Conservative members at that meeting were not willing to support those recommendations, or a significant number of them tried to amend it so that only one recommendation would be going forward, so thank you for the question.
Right, thank you for that, were there any other questions to councillor Nettinger? If not, is there any to councillor Goldsack, Murphy?
I'm sorry, Chair, you mentioned my name but I'm not sure why.
Well, are you not on the Peterborough Combined Authority?
Sorry, on the scrutiny committee. So, that's correct.
Yes, yeah, I thought that's where you stayed, so is there any other questions to the Combined Authority? No, right. Finally, we move to written questions, I gather that there's no questions that have been notified by the deadline, is that still correct? In which case, that concludes the business for the agenda today and I can thank members for their contributions and it's a nice day out there, I gather the pubs are open, so thank you very much for coming, ladies and gentlemen, quite an exciting, unusual meeting, I must say.